I'd like to call the order, try again? I'd like to call the order, the City of Spanishish Planning Commission at 6:00 on May 3. I'd like to start with roll call. We'll start on my right this time.
Joe Lipinski.
Ryan Coleman.
Mike Luxenberg.
Kathy Richardson.
Bobo Islam.
Jeff Wasserman.
Mike Collins, congratulations to all the graduates. Wazoo has their ceremony this Saturday.
Great. Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Subpo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, Cameron, will you review the work program calendar for us?
Happy to, Madam Chair, thank you. Commissioners got copies of this in their email packet and there are copies available on the table. I'm Cameron Grohl with our Community Development Department. We publish two calendars these days. One is the normal horizontal one, which has one item on it that we're doing right now, which is Environmental Critical Areas Ordinance, just looking out into the future. And then a vertical version that has a little more detail on the subject matter that's going to be handled in each of those cases there. Just note for the, again, for the record, you have two regular meetings for the commission in May, tonight and on the 17th. You have a joint meeting with the city council this next Tuesday on the 8th. And then, starting in June and July, instead of the 1st and 3rd Thursday, we're operating on the 2nd and 4th Thursday. So people should keep that on their own calendars to make sure that if they want to participate, they're here on the right night. Any questions about the calendar?
Level of service hasn't made the calendar yet. What do you anticipate?
Well, level of service would be one of the things we talk about, because that's a subject for the joint meeting next Tuesday. I think we'll all know a little bit more after that joint meeting. We sent the commission a kind of a heads-up email yesterday saying this is a new subject that seems to be heading our way. We have kind of a rough calendar with just sort of months shown as opposed to days. And that is still in, that's as much as I know today. So once you meet with the city council, we'll know a little bit more about what their expectations are, and maybe we can talk timeframe.
Cameron, to jog my memory, between 17th of May and June 14th, we don't have any meeting. Is that because we are packing ourselves early on and we don't have much to go during the time?
I think there's two things going on there. One, the 5th Thursday in May would fall in a holiday week, and we're avoiding those, both for Commissioner as well as members of the public availability. And then, looking into June and July, the 2nd and 4th seem to fit better with an overall schedule. So we ended up, and so that does present a little gap. Now, normally, that's a great opportunity, at least for staff to catch up, and I think some of that will happen. We also have some pre-arranged staff absences amongst your team that you see here right now. So we're going to do our best to work around that, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the calendar? Great. Director's report.
Thank you. Very short report. Commissioner will recall that the home business regulations, which you handed off to the city council in March, are underway there and right now. They had their first reading and opened their public hearing on these regulations on Tuesday night. Not a whole lot of public comment. You'll remember Ms. Hunreiter, I mispronounced it, yes. One of our local business owners that testified before you also came to the city council, and members of the chamber were there as well. And we went through some of the council member concerns on various topic areas, got a little direction to draft some amendments on those subject areas, things that would probably introduce a little more certainty and a little more specificity into the code to reflect those concerns. So that drafting is underway right now, that will be available for the second reading and continued public hearing on May 14th. So those who are interested can continue to participate in that process. And then, two other things I'll make note of. We said we have a joint meeting with the city council this coming Tuesday, May 8th. We'll be talking about the critical areas, code update process, what you're in right now. We'll talk a little bit more about this later on in your agenda tonight, about specific goals for that, and then this LOS subject. We'll be looking for a second joint meeting, at least our normal time is sometime in September. Theoretically, another one could occur in advance of that, but we'll have to see what comes out of May 8th. Last thing I'll note for the record is that all departments here at the city got our first look at budget instructions, looking forward into 2013, '14, with an email today. So for your purposes, that means we have to get out our crystal ball, look at our state statutes, look at our undone work program, look at our comprehensive plan, and see what still needs to be done. And develop a work program accordingly and an associated budget. And that's not something the commission typically deals with directly, but as your principal staff, I'll keep you informed as we develop that, at least with the major elements. And then, that will be something that gets transmitted from the city manager to the city council, probably around about September, October, and will be adopted by the city council, we hope, by November, prior to Thanksgiving is all is the goal. Any questions about my report?
Does not appear as though we have any questions today. Great. So now we have an opportunity for public comment. I would like to request that we hold any public comment related to tonight's topic, which is the recommendation regarding streams and fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, after the staff presentation. So do we have any public comment that is not related to tonight's topic? Okay, seeing none, I am going to close the general public comment period for this evening, and we will proceed with our old business regarding environmentally critical areas. And just a brief kind of review of the order of business for today. Today, we are covering the recommendations that we've received to date relative to streams and fish and wildlife habitat corridor areas. I think I have that right. Today's kind of flow of meeting will be, we'll do a staff presentation, we'll have an opportunity for public comment, and then we will have some planning commission discussion regarding whether or not we want to proceed the set of recommendations individually to our formal kind of deliberation process, to that next stage in the process. So there will be no decisions made explicitly around what changes would necessarily be in that final set of code, but we will determine out of the recommendations which ones we want to consider further. After that, we will talk about a little bit of prep work for next Tuesday's meeting. Okay? So with that, Evan?
Pardon me. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Debbie, do you want to turn in on the PowerPoint?
Oh, I'm sorry. While we're waiting for that, there is a sign-up sheet in the back. If you do want to provide public comment, please sign up. We will be going through the public comment in the order that people have signed up. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just a few preliminary items, and then I'll start by summarizing the recommendations for tonight. As always, just a couple logistical items at the very start here. We are intending to give you a brief presentation on the materials in the packet that you saw, and I'll get to those in just a moment. After doing so, would encourage the commission to hear public comment on the city's recommendation memo to you. And then, after closing the public comment, provide any direction to the staff in terms of document, or pardon me, recommendations to advance to our July public hearing, and any necessary information the commission needs to make their final decision. With that, just a quick reminder, today is the second, or tonight, rather, is the second step in a two-step process. This second step, so to speak, is a little bit unusual in that we are hearing draft recommendations both tonight and on May 17th. Tonight's recommendations focus primarily on streams, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. May 17th, we will be focusing on wetlands, lake management areas, the overlay. And as Cameron mentioned, our next meeting after that will be June 14th, where we'll be focusing our attention on the best available science presentation related to landslide hazard areas and the erosion hazard near sensitive water body overlay. In the resource guide you should receive tonight, a updated comment summary matrix. This is the matrix that summarizes all of the written comment that we've received. The matrix has been updated actually through late this afternoon, so I believe we're now up to 106 comments in that matrix. I'll note for the record, we did have a earlier version of that matrix that went out on Friday. I believe that was posted on the web on Friday. That included updates through that Thursday, the April 26th. We've received several comments since then. They've made it onto the matrix. Staff has not had a chance to prepare any kind of response to the public comment. We will be doing so in the next week or two, and you'll see those updated as we move along. You do have staff recommendation memo number two, as promised in the book. That's a new item under tab 10. Tab 10 will, of course, encapsulate the entire block of topics we're looking at right now. That recommendation memo summarizes essentially the recommendations coming from the consultant's work, AMEX work around best available science, and the public comment that we received recommending specific changes to our regulations. And then last, under tab 10, you will see a new verbal public testimony summary, which is the Q&amp;A matrix referenced on the third bullet here. This summary does include both blocks of topics that we're talking about today and on May 17th. We've attempted to answer or provide a response to all of the comments we've heard so far. We will be updating that based upon the public comment we hear tonight and on May 17th, and providing we will follow up. Commissioners, just a quick note, this actually came up in the context of an email respectfully from Commissioner Lipinski earlier today, and it's been one of those items we've danced around a couple of times. So I'm going to take a moment, if I may, and speak to the context in which you might decide to depart from the best available science recommendations in terms of evaluating a different recommendation to make to the city council on our critical area regulations. What I've done here tonight is summarize what the Growth Management Act refers to in terms of our duty as a city to document and what to consider when making a departure from best available science. There is a legal context to some of this, and that particular set of questions is still out under discussion with our city attorney, so I will likely have a follow-up slide or two at a future meeting. With those, I'll just go through a couple items here on the screen if I may. Of course, the Growth Management Act, as we've noted several times in the past, requires that best available science inform the planning commission and the city council on any updates to the critical area regulations that we're discussing tonight and in future meetings. If the city departs from a best available science recommendation, we do have a special burden under the Growth Management Act in terms of documenting what that departure is based upon and why we're making that recommendation. Possible sources for, and so what we need to look at is what policy basis do we have for making a departure? And the Washington Administrative Code lays out a number of various sources that you could look to in terms of identifying a policy basis for deviating from a best available science recommendation to the city council. I've listed a couple here up on the screen. Of course, the most obvious one would be this Spanish comprehensive plan or Growth Management Act directive that's not otherwise contemplated in our critical areas regulations. The WAC specifically lists out the third bullet here, which I've included for your reference. And these are legal, social, cultural, economic, political information sources that the commission might consider in making their final recommendation to the city council. The city's responsibility is to document this if we depart from the best available science recommendation. So we do need to identify the source of the policy that we're using instead of the best available science recommendation or document into the record that supports the decision that the, or the recommendation that the planning commission would be making. We need to provide a rationale for departing from the best available science in support of pursuing that policy option. And then, we do need to identify potential risks to the functions and values of the critical area feature in question. For example, later on tonight, we will be talking about relocating streams, type F streams, as a policy choice when we're looking at building public infrastructure, roads, parks, the like. The city has recommended that we not advance this option to July 7th. That recommendation is actually based upon some of our comprehensive plan policies that speak to constructing public infrastructure in a manner that balances critical area protection and the public need for good infrastructure connectivity. This would be one of the items that we would need to cite into the record if the planning commission decides to follow that recommendation by the city staff. Make sense generally? Yeah, okay. So, moving on to then the draft amendments before us tonight. The draft amendments, as you noted in your packet, we have not provided you with draft code language to review. We have generated a code language, to be blunt, around some of these items, but not all of the items. Many of the recommendations are relatively complex. From an efficiency standpoint, we decided not to generate regulations until we had a good sense of the planning commission's eventual interest in whether or not these topics would be advanced. The, of course, the planning commission's decision to make the advancement, and any input around the recommendation itself would be the basis for us drafting regulations. And we will make sure that those draft regulations are available well in advance of our July public hearing. The goal for tonight is the same goal that we had a few weeks ago now, when we were evaluating the critical aquifer recharge area, frequently flooded areas, and seismic hazard, in that we have summarized, of course, the recommendations that we've heard so far. We would encourage the planning commission to hear and consider any public comments on that recommendation set in the staff response. And then, we would ask that the planning commission provide any additional direction to the city staff and identify specifically which amendments to advance to July for the public hearing and final review. Source for the recommendations, I mentioned this a moment ago, but just for clarity's sake, we do have essentially two sources tonight. We have our best available science reports that we've received two weeks ago now, and the public comments.
Evan, real briefly, have we received any additional recommendations since this memo was published?
I have to admit, I'm not 100% certain. And that's in part because we've only summarized the public comment I received this week.
Okay.
If there was one that was received this week, I may have missed it in the interim.
Okay. Thank you.
The first recommendation then, and I am following the order that was established in the memo, this is recommendation 2-1. That recommendation essentially recommended that the city reevaluate its wildlife corridor regulations based upon which species of interest or priority species that the planning commission or city council might elect to provide additional protection for. The best available science report recommended that the city look at the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife recommendations for wildlife corridor widths, which we have begun to do, and evaluate wildlife quarters already constrained by development as a factor in establishing any new buffer width or corridor width, pardon me. I've just used the B-word when I shouldn't have. I guess our staff comment here is that we do recommend that this item be advanced to the July public hearing. The planning commission can provide direction now on which species to evaluate. Respectfully, my preference, and I believe the city's preference here, would be to allow the city staff to provide you with a range of options to look at in our July hearing rather than identifying specific species tonight. That's probably a burdensome task with very little background information informing the planning commission. We had a similar recommendation to the first one in the best available science report from the consultant, and this recommendation, it's very similar, and I do apologize that it's on the same topic and worded very similarly. This focuses on the minimum buffer width. So I'll remind the commission that currently, what our wildlife corridor regulations require is that you have a wildlife corridor that's 300 feet wide. The minimum width that we authorize under our code today is 150 feet, and that's typically when you're centered on a critical area feature, for example, a stream. The best available science report that noted that often 150 feet width is not going to serve any benefit for terrestrial animals. So they recommended that we look at increasing that minimum width from 150 feet to some other number, depending on which wildlife species we might identify as a priority in Spanish. Again, I would suggest that this is something that we could advance to the July, I forgot to click, to our July review, and it would be something that we can provide you with a specific set of recommendations. We can even break this out by species type, for example, for the planning commission to consider. This would be for areas that are currently relatively undeveloped, so this is not something where we would be looking at retrofitting it into an existing developed neighborhood. Recommendation 2-3 was relatively straightforward. Our code currently allows for stream crossings in certain circumstances. It's not very specific about how we handle trails crossing streams. This was a specific recommendation that we look at incorporating both bridges and or boardwalks in any stream crossing that we would authorize in the future. It's a relatively straightforward amendment. It's actually one of the ones we've already drafted. We would recommend that you advance this amendment to July for further consideration and review at that time. It is consistent, of course, with best available science, the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife likely already requires this. Recommendation 2-4 is to, it's one of a paired set of recommendations again. In this particular recommendation, 2-4 focuses on buffer reductions for streams, and it requires that the city, or recommends, rather, that the city look at the functional values of stream buffers when authorizing any buffer reduction. So I remind the planning commission, we authorize buffer reductions in at least two scenarios at administrative level. The first is through buffer averaging, where we reduce the buffer in one area and we expand the buffer in a different area. And the second would be through straight buffer reduction, where we can reduce the buffer currently up to 50% through administrative review, which typically associated with a building permit. Currently, when we're looking at the functional values of that buffer, we primarily focus on the water quality aspects of buffer protection, and we focus less on other functions that that buffer might provide. For example, you heard at our last meeting, habitat values that are often associated with streams. That's not an explicit item that we evaluate when we're looking at buffer reductions. This recommendation would require that the city evaluate those functions, those additional functions of the stream buffer, when evaluating any kind of buffer reduction, either through averaging or otherwise. We do recommend that you advance this amendment to July, and this is something that we would then provide you with draft code to evaluate. 2-5 is the other version or other flavor of this. Our code currently allows us to actually require buffers to be increased in certain high-value circumstances. I have to admit, this is one of those areas of the code where I'm not aware of that the city has ever implemented this particular code requirement. The thought here, though, would be that if there is any such buffer increase requirement coming from the city staff, that again should be based upon functional values of that additional buffer area rather than a non-explicit staff recommendation. Make sense? Similarly, we do recommend that you advance this amendment to July. Recommendation 2-6, this is looking at relocations of type F streams for restoration purposes. We allow, oddly enough, we allow relocation of type NP and NS streams for restoration purposes. NP and NS, I'll remind you, are the lower value features, but we explicitly prohibit relocating type F streams for restoration. And this is just straight restoration, this isn't typically associated with a project. This particular amendment would allow for us to do such registration through a relocation project. We are recommending that you advance this amendment to July as well. Following our theme of paired recommendations, we also have a recommendation from the consultant, pardon me, to prohibit relocations of type F streams for public road, trail, park projects. This is actually the recommendation that I was alluding to earlier tonight. Best available science frankly doesn't really support relocations of type F streams, except in the case I just described a moment ago, for restoration itself. So best available science frankly doesn't support relocation of type F streams when we're building a street or a park project or something of that nature. We are recommending that you not advance this item to July, and this is specifically because we are looking at balancing various GMA goals, as I alluded to earlier tonight. In this particular case, the example that I provided earlier is accurate. We are looking at balancing the city's goals to provide appropriate public infrastructure connectivity and environmental protection. Remind the commission, this does not prevent, or this does not eliminate the requirement on the city to do appropriate mitigation and avoidance sequencing. This is simply just not a prohibition on any kind of relocation itself. And I can speak to this further if there are questions in a moment. Consultant recommendation 2-8 was a recommendation to provide a fee-in-lieu mitigation option for streams if a fee-in-lieu program was also adopted for wetland mitigation. And I need to remind the planning commission just a little bit about what a fee-in-lieu program is and how it's distinct from other types of mitigation options that we currently provide. The critical area regulations currently allow mitigation if there's a necessary stream impact, for example, culvert under a driveway. And they establish an order of preference on how that mitigation is completed. The ideal situation is for mitigation to occur onsite in kind to the impact that was originally contemplated by the project. We then have the option to look at off-site mitigation, either downstream or upstream, of the subject site, as long as it's in the same drainage sub-basin. To have an impact beyond, that cannot be mitigated in the fashion I just described, you are typically looking at a reasonable use exception approval by the city staff. Reasonable use exception, to remind you, is a variance to the stream standards at that point. And we are in a situation that's more analogous to a negotiated result rather than a prescribed result coming out of our code. The stream fee-in-lieu mitigation program, if it was to be adopted, would be located, would be stream mitigation that was located off-site, typically in a different drainage sub-basin, and likely not within the same basin at all. The current stream fee-in-lieu mitigation programs that we're aware of focus on the Raya 8 watershed that the city of Spanish is located in, and that encompasses much of the greater east side and actually up even, I believe, into Snohomish County. So it's a very large area. The city staff is recommending that you not advance this stream fee-in-lieu mitigation program idea to our July public hearing, pardon me, I'm losing my words at this point. Mitigation, and the basic idea here is twofold. Mitigation exported outside of the city's sub-basin and frankly, likely outside of the city itself, is going to provide little or no benefit directly to the city of Spanish, where we have the impact occurring. And these could be, of course, impacts to some of our most valued features. There's a second concern, and I regret that I haven't put it up here on the board tonight, which is that the program itself is relatively new, and we likely are talking about enrolling in a program with King County. And so there could be a false expectation on the part, created on the part of potential applicants, that would hope to generate or jump just to this fee-in-lieu approach rather than going through that hierarchical onsite-than-offsite mitigation sequence. Recommendation 2.9 is a little bit simpler than the one I just went through. This is related to the type O streams. Type O streams are streams that essentially start and stop without any defined endpoint. They don't flow into or from any salmonid-bearing feature. They're a feature, they're a stream that's been identified in some jurisdictions for cases where they really don't know where the stream is going, but it's not connecting into a lake or a salmonid-bearing feature at some future point. We are recommending that you not adopt this recommendation either. The city staff is recommending that you not advance this. And that's in particular because there are no known type O streams within the city of Spanish. We're not confident that the best available science, even though it was brought up in the best available science report respectfully, actually supports this type O stream classification. When we pressed on that particular question with the consultant a little bit further, it wasn't quite clear where the recommendation had come from, and it appears that they were simply noting that other jurisdictions had this classification type rather than trying to make an explicit recommendation to the city. Because it was included in the best available science report, you are seeing it here tonight. It also creates some unnecessary complexity, again, along the lines of creating a false expectation on the part of property owners. So the last three recommendations that I'm going to cover now are coming from the public comment that we've received rather than from the best available science report that AMEX generated for the city. The first recommendation, and pardon me, recommendation 2-10 and recommendation 2-11 are somewhat similar, and so we've provided a response to those two ideas in one staff response rather than breaking it out separately. The first recommendation is that the city should, the city code, rather, should allow the option for site-specific buffers. And the idea here is that we would establish stream buffers, in particular, pardon me, we are speaking of streams, based upon the site conditions surrounding the stream. And in particular, the idea, the specific idea that, as I understand it, is that the human-made improvements, for example, the driveway, the house, road improvements, what have you, effectively create a barrier for any water quality value or frankly, other functional values to the stream at the edge of that feature. So you're not going to see a water quality value associated with the ground underneath the house, you're not going to see a habitat value with the ground. You're not going to see a habitat value with the ground associated underneath the house. And that the buffers established off the edge of the stream should reflect that. 2-11 is a very similar recommendation. And the basic idea here is that we would recognize the difference between streams in a developed neighborhood and streams that are in an undeveloped area. Streams within a developed neighborhood, of course, you're going to have houses that were built prior to critical area ordinances existing, frankly, if they're, if they're old enough. Or even with critical area ordinances that had different stream buffers at different points over time. Where you have those improvements, the idea again is that those human-created improvements will eliminate or greatly reduce any functional value of that stream buffer in that area. And prescribing a straightforward 150-foot buffer or otherwise would not make sense if that buffer transected through a human-made improvement. Standard widths, standard buffer widths would theoretically apply in areas that are undeveloped under this particular proposal. So if we were looking at a portion of the city, for example, I'll pick on the Trossack's neighborhood. We have some undeveloped tracks out there that do have streams flowing through them. You could see a buffer coming off that stream that would be our standard width tonight, or as it is today. The city staff is recommending that you advance both of these amendments to July for further review. Be upfront with you, we need to do more analysis on both of these amendments before providing you A with code and B with a solid recommendation for final action in July itself. And what we're going to be looking at is whether or not these ideas are supported by best available science. If not, and this is, you know, an explicit item that, please note, we do need to identify a policy basis for these proposed amendments, similar to the policy basis that I described a moment ago, related to relocating type F streams for public infrastructure. And we do need to look at essentially the practicality of applying these standards. So ease-of-use, consistent application will be important, especially evaluating a stream buffer where it might vary from site to site as we move up and down the stream channel. We need to make sure that we can consistently apply this within the city in a fair and equitable manner. Which brings us to the very last recommendation. And this is to provide frankly, a better code, a better criteria in our code for defining streams as they are applied to properties. The original comment, and frankly, it summarized in your recommendation memo, focused on a section of Washington Administrative Code, which wasn't really pertinent to the question at hand, which is whether or not our code is clear in defining streams and how those are established. City staff is recommending that you also advance this amendment to our July discussion. And we'll be doing a similar type of review of this proposed amendment for your eventual decision in July. And with that, I would encourage the planning commission to open public comment.
So at this point in time, we will open public comment. Evan, will you bring the sign-up sheet up, or have someone bring the sign-up sheet up? So we'll, just a quick reminder, we do have a seven-minute limit for public comments per person. I would encourage you to stay within or below that limit. I would also encourage you to, if your public comment is related to wetlands, I would encourage you to hold that comment until our next meeting. I'm sorry, I want to be very clear about this, until our meeting on May 17th, because that is when we will be actually discussing the recommendations for wetlands. After the public comment has concluded, we will go back through the recommendations one by one. We'll have an opportunity for planning commissioners to ask questions. And then we'll have a discussion about whether or not we want to advance the recommendation. All right? So with that, the first person that has signed up is Barbara Robbie. Debbie, do you have the timer? Okay, great. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Robbie. I live at 21421 Northeast Sixth Place. I would like, I am concerned about 2-1 that Evan spoke about. After the city has determined the needs of the species it most wants to protect. I look at the whole ecosystem. If you take one species out, you've kind of disturbed the ecosystem. As I've mentioned before, I live on George Davis Creek. This particular neighborhood has been there for over 30 years. Most of us have an acre. I have the 150-foot buffer. Some of my neighbors are closer. But at this point, we have a nice wildlife corridor that runs the length of probably 214, well, 214th, all the way down to the lake. There's, if you look at aerial photos, it's, you can hardly find the houses in there. It's so, and it provides habitat for deer. We have bear. You know, I've raised my children there, as everyone else has, and we've never had a problem. I also want to bring to your attention, the Spanish review today that came out, or yesterday, has an article written by Bob McCoy. And he writes, "We are fortunate to live on the wildlife urban interface where we get to see a broad array of wildlife. Black bears and other animals can become a nuisance, but as your article notes, 90% of the wildlife problems stem from our failure to recognize required precautions when living along the WUI." And it brings up a form that they are going to have. It says, "On June 6, Brian Kurtson, carnivore research scientist at Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, will present a general interest, family-friendly presentation called 'From Backyards to Mountain Tops: Coexisting with Carnivores in Washington.' The free show will start at 6 at the Spanish Library." Maybe this is something that some of us would want to attend before we start selecting which species we want to retain in our area. I know we are urban. I know we are called a city. I remember that we became a city, not because we wanted to look like Seattle, but because we wanted more say in, in what we did. And we retired of King County telling us what to do. So I encourage you in 2-1, when we start deciding what species we're going to select, that we look at the entire ecosystem and maybe try to preserve what we now have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Robbie, we have a brief question from one of our commissioners, Commissioner Collins.
Yes, Barbara, do you have any species that you'd like to see promoted by larger buffers or setbacks?
You know, what we have right now, the 150 feet to the stream, and then there's a road, and then there's 150 feet on the other side of the stream. That would make your 300 feet. It doesn't take it all out of, if you're looking at a stream, you know, people usually own to the stream. That doesn't create a hardship for increasing the buffers. So a 300-foot sounds sufficient, it seems to work sufficiently in this neighborhood.
So you're not advocating larger setbacks?
I'm not. At current, currently, this is not deemed, the George Davis Creek bed that I, or, stream is not designated as a wildlife habitat, and maybe it should be.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that I have on the list is Harry Shed. Harry has not, or Mr. Shed has not indicated whether he would like to comment. And he's indicating through hand motions, no. All right. The next person I have is Jim Osgood. Jim, Mr. Osgood, I have to work on the misters and the misses, sorry.
Thank you. My name is Jim Osgood, 19661 Southeast 24th Way. The previous speaker was up here not talking about wildlife buffers, but it sounds to me like it's more stream buffers that she was dealing with. It's kind of like, I hate to say it, it's almost like apples and oranges. For me, a wildlife corridor obviously could be one and the same, but I'm concerned about the wildlife corridors that go through properties that don't already have buffers and how, if at all, the owners of those properties are compensated. And then if you're talking about expanding that even further, you know, once again, it even increases, it's more difficult. I'm all for helping promote wildlife. Our property is a certified wildlife habitat through the Wildlife Federation. So we're 100% behind that. But there is an issue in terms of the compensation and how you handle that. And I'm not sure how the density calculations on developments would be handled related to wildlife corridors and wildlife corridor buffers, if that would cause, if you could still allow the density to be calculated, including those corridors. You know, it probably wouldn't be doing any damage, but I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. The other thing I wanted to talk about too is the type F streams for restoration purposes. What happens to the buffers? What happens if it's relocated 100 feet away? And there's another property at that point. And so that, that becomes a problem for that next property owner to be able to handle the buffers. How are you going to, how are you going to deal with that? I certainly understand the city not wanting to have issues related to type F streams in public road trails or projects. But I'm wondering, and I know it's probably not realistic, but I think the city should be setting an example for the citizens. And I think that if they are able to do that, there should be some very strict conditions involved to allow them to do that. I know there is a need, but it shouldn't be, it should be very strictly laid out, but they have to meet certain criteria in order for that to happen. I am very pleased too, that the staff has made the recommendations from the comments 210, 211, and 212. I think that's a definitely step in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Osgood. Do we have any questions from the commission? No, thank you. All right. The next person we have is, and I'm going to get your name right eventually. Yes, please pronounce your last name for me. Mayarchik. Thank you, Ms. Mayarchik.
It's draining pretty good.
My name is Jessie and Joseph Mayarchik. We live at 2424 212 Avenue, Southeast Spanish. At the town hall meeting around March 15, I spoke to you in regards to the setback of Pine Stream. In our situation, there is a 100 feet, 150-foot setback while others build close, if not underwater of certain stream and lakes. During the last town hall meeting, I found it very interesting. You had a guest speaker who explained how streams, how streams are classified. They explain in much detail how the setbacks are determined by the stream's classification. During this meeting, we were informed that Pine Stream is in fact a seasonal stream and belongs to the type NS streams, where water is in those streams only when there is heavy rain or when water is released from basins farther up the stream, but not during the rest of the year. I believe from the information that was presented during this meeting by your guest speaker, that there is a setback of 50 feet based on the stream's classification, but not 150 feet as ours is. I still do believe that with those stream that cuts our property, there should not be more than a 30 to 50-foot buffer to the fact that no water or fish exists there. Based on this information that was presented to the members of the city of Spanish, I would expect the city to accept our permits that we have prior for in regards to the addition. I would also like for the council to make strong recommendations to the city of Spanish to change the setbacks of the stream based on the science of classification that was explained at such detail, that it was misclassified and it be corrected so that no one in future has the same problem. Another, another issue was the one with our neighbor, the developer of Pine Lake Community. We are still awaiting a response or explanation as to if there is a filtration type system placed on the pipe that is released into our property. Our trees continue to fall over and die. I would, I would love to anyone from the council and invite you all to come to see just how the developer has taken the measures to care of the development. He has developed and has to see what they have left for us on our property, so that you may judge for yourself if my request is unreasonable. I know that when you speak of issue in a forum such, such as this, differs completely when you can actually see the damage that was caused. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Great. Mr. Brockway is next. And after Mr. Brockway will be Mr. Swarrenson.
Reed Brockway, 167 East Lake Spanish Shore Lane, Northeast. I have two things I'm going to cover tonight, quickly as I can. One, is I have something to say about process. And then second, I want to very briefly summarize the comments, the issues, and the recommendations associated with them that you've received considerably more lengthy written testimony on. As for process, this schedule for tonight's meeting says initial planning commission recommendations. And from what staff has said, it appears that your charter tonight is to decide which of the proposed recommendations are to be advanced for additional consideration. I read the packet for this meeting, and at least the parts that have been posted for now. And among its contents are much abbreviated summaries of the recommendations you've received from me and from other members of the public. And then, of course, the draft amendments from staff. I'd like to start with a question in this regard, if I may. Are you going to be working basically from these distilled comments and draft recommendations? Or are you going to refer to our recommendations, comments and recommendations themselves when you are deciding what to advance for additional consideration?
We will be working with the information that staff provides to us, which will include that information that's been provided in detail. We all have access to the public comment that's been provided to us.
I'm not sure I understand that answer. So, so the much more detailed information that the distilled versions of staff has supplied you with, that exist in the public testimony, is that on the table?
So that, we will have specific code that we will review and pursue later in the process. So what you're seeing right now is a summary of the recommendation. And we will have some discussion about whether or not we want to proceed with that and what additional information we may require in order to consider that further. So I, I'm not sure, Reed, what your, I'm not sure exactly what your question is or if I'm answering it, but perhaps we could take a few minutes offline to have some further dialogue on this.
Certainly, yeah. My concern, of course, is that a lot gets lost in that distillation.
Very much understand that.
Okay, all right. Now, to go on to my process topic here, and I'm going to primarily read this because I won't get through it in time if I don't. As you may know, George Toski and I met with Cameron and Susan Cesar last week to go over my written testimony to your last meeting. I'm referring to the six significant issues related to stream regulations that I submitted. George and I were encouraged by that meeting as we feel we were taken seriously. But we still face a situation similar to what happened with the SMP, where there's no provision for a dialogue between you and us on these issues. Once you start deliberating, we citizens are dependent on staff to adequately represent our recommendations and the rationale behind them, or you pull out our input and refer to it. And if something goes awry in that process, we're not allowed to speak up. Here's an example. When discussing buffers, one of the arguments proponents make is that even if there is no direct benefit on the feature a buffer is associated with in a particular region or circumstance, there's still a benefit of creating habitat for birds and animals and insects, et cetera. I would argue that that is creating habitat for habitat's sake. And if it's justifiable policy, it should apply to all properties, not just be a burden on those in the vicinity of an ECA. So it should be rejected as an argument for requiring a buffer where a buffer would otherwise serve no purpose. But if I'm sitting here wearing a gag, that point might not get factored into your consideration. And policy could be made that is then difficult to reverse. That's just an example. Another one is, and I hope this doesn't happen, there exists that list of so-called known topics that's been laid down as the scoping document for this process. That list was prepared by staff, insofar as I know, without public That list was prepared by staff, insofar as I know, without public review or input. We did not make an issue of it because while much of it is quite specific, like standards for streams, trails and streams and wetland buffers, there are two topics that seem broad enough to encompass our issues. Those are review of existing and potential areas of flexibility and options for applicants, and standards for human-altered streams, excuse me, human-altered or created features. I believe all of my issues could be construed as falling under one or both of those, so I hope not to hear, "We can't fix that now because it's out of scope." That dramatization that I read you the last time can happen, and things like that do happen, given the current code. The time to fix the inequities in the code is now. They should not be allowed to burden citizens for years to come. Now, that said, I'd like to briefly summarize the six issues and my associated recommendations that you have more detail on in my written testimony. The one-size-fits-all stream buffers that cut 130, 180, or 330-foot swaths of restricted land use through developed neighborhoods, the solution there is allowing buffer delineation as an option, and that's a very workable solution. It's inexpensive, other jurisdictions do it, and it has minimal impact on our code. The next of the six suggestions was, or issues was failure of the code to adequately distinguish requirements on developed neighborhoods from those on raw land. It's a very real problem, and I think the dramatization brought that out, too. There's a relatively simple solution, use the currently empty paragraph on urban lots as a place to consolidate and clarify requirements for maintenance and minor improvements near ECAs. Third item, current problem with stream buffer definitions. A sizable salmon-bearing stream, like Ebright Creek, for example, and a drainage charged by rainstorms are vastly different in their environmental values, but they're treated the same now. The solution here is to add criteria to our code that take into account flow rate and achieve a balance between environmental and human concerns by providing some gradation in the stream mitigation. Grandfathering provisions. Presently, they're scattered around, ambiguous, and as they pertain to landscaping of established yards, they're simply inadequate. Again, I think the dramatization I read you points that out, points out that problem. The solution is to consolidate these provisions as much as possible into this newly populated paragraph that I mentioned on maintenance. Numerous, in many cases seemingly arbitrary, magic numbers are presently in the code, and that's, of course, reflected in that table that we submitted to the April 5 meeting. If we're doing this right, each number should be assessed for the science and law behind it and replaced where possible by functional criteria that derive from the intended environmental objective. But if we can't do that now, then the need for the option of buffer delineation is all the greater. And finally, and thank you for bearing with me, the need for an independent ombudsman. Staff has asserted that this option, that the option to appeal a decision in-house is sufficient and satisfies this need. There are those who feel that the problem can be a bias on the part of staff, and an independent entity is needed in that case. And while this matter is administrative in nature, I say now's the time to address it. It's unclear, if it's unclear how big a problem this is, then I suggest that the city should conduct a representative poll. So I guess that's my best shot, given the time I'm allowed, but I'll be happy to come up here again if you have anything that you'd like me to address during the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Brockway. I believe we have a brief question from Mr. Lipinski.
Certainly.
I do. What do you mean, what is buffer delineation and how would it apply?
Yeah, okay. Buffer delineation.
Please keep it brief.
Yeah, you bet, yeah. It's simply a process where you decide what the actual range of influence around the feature, stream in my case, but wetland, that actually exists. It takes into account a topography, whether water's draining into that stream, or maybe it's in a flat region of land, barriers, like was discussed by Evan, and the actual range of viable habitat that exists there. And it is a process. It has been done by other jurisdictions.
What other jurisdictions do you know that have done this?
Aberdeen did it recently for their wetlands. Bellevue has done it. Mount Vernon.
Great. So if we want to have further conversation about buffer delineation, we can actually recommend that that proceed as a recommendation that we would consider.
Okay.
Any other questions? Great, thank you, thank you. Mr. Sorenson, after Mr. Sorenson, we have Ms. Tiliakos.
Hi, I'm Bob Sorenson, 22609 Northeast Second Street. First, I guess I really need to apologize to the planning commission and to staff. Obviously, I've not made myself clear in making a request. And comment number 53 on the comments sheet is basically where I had asked for staff or the consultant to provide us with the bookends, the essential code requirements that are driven by outside jurisdictions, state, federal, and county. The response was somewhat ambiguous. It said it would be addressed in the, where appropriate, in the best available science reports. I have reviewed the best available science report, and while it does have comparative buffers and setbacks and so on with other jurisdictions, it does not lay out the very basic non-negotiables. So basically, what I'm asking for is if the city of Samamish took no additional action but chose to enforce only the environmental restrictions mandated by other jurisdictions, what would that look like? Now, I know that consultants purport to do this kind of consulting for many jurisdictions. These are the essential basics, the non-changing basics. It shouldn't take them a great deal of time to come up with this kind of information for us. Second, I'd like to congratulate Evan on a great presentation this evening. I thought it was well done, and I appreciated the information and most of the recommendations. I guess the only, the only other thing I wanted to say is that I agree with Mr. Brockway on the issue of the ombudsman, to get some kind of an impartial third-party reviewer. I'm not quite sure at this point how that would work, but it would be certainly something worth, worth looking into. Any questions?
No, great. No? Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Ms. Tiliakos? After Ms. Tiliakos, it looks like we have Ms. Stahl.
Good evening. Erica Tiliakos, 1130 Lancaster Way, Southeast. These are general public comments on the proposed review you are now undertaking. There has been some comment about the validity of the jurisdictions used in comparing our code. We would like to point out that no comparisons should determine any standards.
Can you pull the microphone a little closer to you? Thank you.
There has been some comment about the validity of the jurisdictions used in comparing our code. We would like to point out that no comparisons should determine any standards that we end up adopting. The reason is that the sunset clause that the council, we would point out, okay, the sunset clause that council inserted into the code in our last mandated update precipitated our current update. Samamish is the first jurisdiction updating code based on best available science for the 2014 mandated update. No other jurisdiction has begun this update. So you're trying to compare our future code with code that's already existing based on the 2005 update. We have a complex wildlife corridor that has been fragmented due to development in areas that were allowed to develop through conditional use permits primarily in the R1 zones and not through regular development regulations. However, the richness of wildlife species that we have in the city should not be reduced to winners and losers. We should continue to accommodate all the wildlife we have here presently and to continue to provide areas for safe passage of predatory wildlife. The National Wildlife Federation study endangered by sprawl has some sobering statistics regarding species decline. I am attaching portions of this report. The full report can be found at the link that I've provided. Regarding fee and loop programs, we know there are several, there are a few property owners that would like to have wetland streams and buffers just go away by paying a fee. However, if they were to read and fully understand how these programs work, they are still obligated to prove the function of the mitigation where they have moved the impact to, along with pain, to monitor for improvements, and most likely still bond for those outcomes. For the city, it will require additional staff to administer. In general, we have heard a lot about the nuisance wetlands and streams are to some people who have them on their property. In public comment, we have not heard property owners acknowledge the privilege they have to live with these amenities or recognize the responsibility of stewardship for the public resources that they, that they live with. Vegetative buffers can be done with aesthetics and functional value at the same time, and recognizing the system's needs helps one to take measures to protect property and to enjoy the return of life in those fringes. We hope to have some examples to show you in the near future. And regarding buffers in streams where things have already been built, one thing was to have built homes in areas when we didn't understand the natural processes of streams. But we do have streams. Zaccus Creek is a very good one to, to talk about, because Zaccus Creek has very, very good habitat available upstream beyond the mouth of the creek. So improving buffers in the stream close to the, to Lakes Samamish and culvert improvements underneath the parkway would allow for restoration of fish passage where Zaccus was a fish-bearing stream before. So there is still a lot of available habitat for fish up on the plateau and on the streams heading down into the lake, but are encumbered by the culverts of the parkway and a lot of properties that are along the, the lake. So anyway, that's it for now. We will be commenting further on the wetland overlays and, and the wetland buffers. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Tiliakos? Yes, we have a question.
Are there maps that show different migratory routes of the different animals, such as bear, such as elk, such as deer, such as whatever, that shows specifically where they go?
The truth is that the original mapped wildlife corridor was, was actually a studied wildlife person that, and that's a link, the link from Lakes Samamish all the way out to the wildlife corridor in Snoqualmie, which we are now, through the federal government, trying to create safe passage across I-90 up towards Snoqualmie and everything. That's all part of the same corridor. So it's obviously been severed. The largest one actually ran right through Skyline High School, down through the Catholic Church, down across my property. So what has happened, and 228th and the widening of 228th has also severed it. Now we end up having these loops, but we also still have a lot of wild wildlife along the plateau. We have cougar, we have bear, we have bobcat, and then we have deer, and we have three pages worth of wildlife here. So the, the basin study actually has an environmental checklist detailing the, the species that were, that we actually have here on the plateau. So we'll be providing that list of species as well.
But the list of species has a map? I mean, because I'm assuming that the bear aren't everywhere on the plateau. There are bear on this side, and there may be something somewhere down there as a different route.
Yeah, I mean, bear, obviously, and cougar and, and bobcat require larger territories. Cougar can have six-mile territories. But I think the thing that we have to recognize is that it's not a choice of which species we're going to protect or which ones we're not going to protect. We, we are urbanizing, and I think what we're trying to avoid by establishing these wildlife corridors and were originally established was to be able to allow for safe passage of these types of animals without them encroaching in human contact, because we don't want to have humans coming up against some of these, these wildlife that could be dangerous if they felt cornered or whatever. And that's why I really feel that 150-foot buffer is not sufficient for a lot of these animals. And the other thing that we haven't talked about is that in R1 zones, that was the flexibility that was afforded within these regulations, is that 50% of, of the land in, in R1 zones was supposed to be left as open space, and that was additional to the required buffers. So that was a way of being able to actually increase the buffers. And, you know, a good part of that is down through now the Mary Piggott property, the park that she has now donated, is a good part of that, of the wildlife corridor, and that continues on down through the plateau down to, to the lake.
So it sounds like we may want to have some further discussion on this topic as well.
I think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Stahl. After Ms. Stahl is Ms. Eastlick, if, okay, and then we'll close with Mr. Kip.
Good evening. I'm making comments tonight for myself and my husband, Mark McGill. My name is Eileen Stahl. I live at 21553 Southeast 28th Lane here in Samamish. We've lived on the Samamish Plateau since 1983 and have seen many changes to our environment. As a matter of fact, citizens voted to become a city to have some control over the unprecedented growth we saw here in the 80s and 90s. We have been involved in the public process that formed our city, the comprehensive plan and the 2005 critical areas ordinance. In these public processes, the city always seeks to balance opposing sides of an issue. This sounds like a common sense approach. However, we feel that with regard to protections for our environment, this is neither rational nor a stance the city should take for the following reasons. By the time we became a city, much of our environment and wildlife had already suffered significant impacts. Mini streams that historically had sustained runs of native cockney salmon were lost due to urbanization, and virtually all of the wetlands across the plateau were degraded by deforestation, filling, drainage, agriculture, and removal of buffers. We need to make up for this loss. Number two, we need to increase protections to compensate for the fact that regulations applied so far have been inadequate. The science has been telling us for years that our regulations have not been strict enough to protect our sensitive areas, and we must increase protections if we hope to have them in the future. Yet we have already compromised these regulations. For example, in 2005, we sacrificed two very special wetland overlays in our town center. These overlays protected the wetland systems at the headwaters of Ebright Creek and George Davis Creek. We will not know the repercussions for these actions for many years. Our environmental, number three, our environmental resources are limited. We have set, we have a set number of lakes, streams, and wetlands, and they are encroached upon more every year. On the other hand, urbanization continues to grow, putting more and more pressure on these limited resources. Number four, the plateau environment is unique and cannot be compared to other jurisdictions. We have unique geology and hydrology which can trigger landslides, harm private property, and endanger lives. Being conservative and protecting the environment here is warranted and wise, because as we all know, nature is unpredictable and can throw a surprise or two our way. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Stahl? No, thank you, Ms. Stahl.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Gregory Kip, address 3011 211th Avenue, Northeast. I spoke to you in February when you had your first meeting on the ECA update, and at that time asked the planning commission to consider, in the scope of work, the way that density is calculated on properties that have critical areas. Currently in the city of Samamish, the critical area acreage is deducted from an allowable density calculation. I passed out, or has been passed out here, an example, hypothetical example, comparing a number of different jurisdictions. And clearly, the city of Samamish is the most restrictive of the jurisdictions that I surveyed in, on the east side here. The example that I gave, and I'll go from one extreme to the other, is when you have 10 acres of a site, undeveloped site, four of which have critical areas or their buffers on them, and six of the acres are on them, and six of the acres are unencumbered. In a couple of jurisdictions, the, what is it, the city of Redmond and King County jurisdiction, the allowable density in an R1 zone is 10 development units. The entire acreage is allowed to be applied to the overlaid zoning of R1. In the city of Sammish, all critical areas are subtracted, and in the example that I had, instead of being allowed the 10 units, you only get six units. And actually, in Sammish, you get less than six units because in addition to the critical areas that are deducted from the base, the requirements for streets and roads are deducted as well. So you end up with less than six development units. In the R1 zones as well, in the city of Sammish, 50% of the site has got to be set aside for permanent open space. I ask that this be considered as part of the ECA review because where better to have the discussion about whether or not the policy now is the appropriate policy or it warrants some change. I understand that it is outside of the known topics that were adopted by the council last year. I had hoped that this would be part of the discussion that took place between the Planning Commission and the council on May 8th, but my understanding is that earlier this, in April, that the known topics was reaffirmed by the city council. I must have missed it, but I've looked at the agendas and the schedules, and I was unable to find any public notice of that topic being discussed at the city council meeting. But if there's any way that that can be put back on the table, I think it's appropriate that it at least be brought forward. The concern that I have is if it's deferred off to just a simple code review without the context of the ECA conversation, that it may well be discounted as we can't do that until we have the discussion within the ECA. And I almost feel like there's a potential catch-22 here. So there's also been staff comment that it may require some analysis of the comprehensive plan as it relates to the growth forecasting and the infrastructure capital improvement program, and I am in some discussion with the staff now about limiting the scope of any potential change to the density calculations so that it could minimize any change to that forecasting that was done. So that's my comment, and thank you very much.
Any questions for Mr. Kip?
I am interested if Evan wants to talk about it at all.
I agree. I'd like to hear, you want to hear why the city thinks it's difficult to do this?
If Evan wishes to address it, I'd love to see him get some time.
I would second that.
All right. So Evan, would you like to share with the commission and the public tonight the staff, current staff comment on this particular request?
In seven minutes or less.
Yes, we're going to time you.
Chair, if I could suggest, I'd be happy to address the topic. Perhaps we should finish our public comment, and I'll do it as part of our recap of the recommendations.
Wonderful, that's a great suggestion. So this does end the list of the folks that were signed up. I do see that we have at least one individual in the audience that would like to speak, so please proceed to the podium.
My name is George Toski, 2430, 238th Place, Northeast in Sammish. The buffer risks recommended by the consultants in the best available science reports are not supported by the scientific method. The scientific method identifies problems and then proposes and tests solutions to the problems. What we see in the BAS reports is an internet search of papers suggesting that buffers as being a solution for protection of streams and wetlands. Reports do not suggest that the buffers are the best solution, and they do not identify what the buffers protect the streams and wetlands from. Specifically, how can the city justify the huge discrepancy between the environmental regulations protecting lakes of Mamish and the current and proposed buffers protecting streams and wetlands? Lakes of Mamish contains threatened Chinook salmon. The buffer requirement to prevent contaminant inflow and provide food and leafy material for the threatened salmon is less than 20 feet. Further, the standard protection for lakes of Mamish is known at loss of ecological function. This standard required by the Shoreline Management Act is more stringent than the best available science mandate of the Growth Management Act. Material's been submitted to you about the decline of the environment in our streams. This material should be taken very seriously. Steps needed to, steps need to be taken to improve our streams. The source of the contamination needs to be identified, and then steps taken to eliminate the contamination. The imposition of buffer risks by our regulations does nothing to improve the quality of our streams. I don't want to be just a naysayer about regulations, and I don't have any scientific basis for what I'm going to say now, but here's what I think are some examples of what the regulations should be saying. When a septic system is required for a single-family residence, it should be located such that the structure, the house that's being built, separates the septic system from the stream or wetland. It blocks when the septic system gets old or starts to fail, that contamination can't get into the stream. Number two, minimum buffers of 20 feet or less should be required to restrict naturally occurring phosphorus from entering the streams. This city does not allow phosphorus to be in fertilizers that we spread on our lawns. So the only phosphorus that's coming is already here in the ground, and all we need to do is to try to keep it from getting into the streams, which is going to do naturally. Number three, we could try to restrict it. Number three, catch basins with filters should be required to capture pollutants on dryways within 50 feet of a stream or wetland. Again, my numbers are 50 feet and all of these things. I have no scientific basis for this. This is just common sense. But the buffer risks that are out there are completely out of range of what the science says is needed to protect lakes of Mamish, which has endangered, or not endangered, threatened Chinook salmon. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mr. Toski? No, thank you, Mr. Toski. All right, do we have anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? Seeing no additional hands raised, we will close our public comment for tonight. We will still have plenty of opportunities to comment on stream regulations going forward. So we'll give Evan a minute to kind of, I think, respond to the request from the Planning Commission. And yes, thank you. If anyone has written public comment that you've reviewed or would like to share with us, please provide that to our Community Development Department Administration staff so that we have that available to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners.
Actually, I am sensing that we may need to take about a three-minute break real briefly before we come back to the recommendations. So, all right, I'm sorry, perhaps that should be five. So we'll take a brief five-minute break. We'll reconvene at 7:25. Thank you. Hate to cut off public comment, or public dialogue, but apparently I don't have a microphone, so it doesn't matter.
Okay. Debbie's coming.
We're done with recess.
You did to me. Would you like them back?
No, but I just wondered why nobody, none of the planning commissioners have seen you.
So I apologize for putting an end to some of the conversations that are going on because I think they're generally valuable and useful, but I would like to reconvene the Planning Commission session. So if Commissioners would please take your seats. I believe we are waiting for one Commissioner to return. So, well, we'll wait.
Should you wait for Jeff?
Yes, I think.
Pardon me, Chair, if that was my cue, I thought we were waiting.
Wait, yes, no, we, snuck in from the back.
Much anticipated.
All right, so just real quickly, I want to recap kind of how we're going to go through this process because this is only our second time and we probably are still refining. But essentially, what Evan will do is he'll walk us through each recommendation. What we'll do is each Commissioner, I would like to give each Commissioner an opportunity to ask any questions that they would like to ask. If we do not have an answer today, we will capture the question and provide an answer in short order. We will then, after we've had an opportunity to each have our questions and our comments shared, we will hopefully start to come to consensus about whether or not we would like to proceed a recommendation on to the next step. All right, any questions about the process? All right, so go ahead.
And Chair, would you still like me to address the net density question?
I would like you to address that briefly, please, thank you.
And I will be brief because it does have a bit of a lengthy backstory, and respectfully, I believe we've spoken with Mr. Kip at length, and I can provide more detail if the commission so directs. In short, when the city incorporated, we did much of our growth management planning for the comprehensive plan based upon some assumed growth projections. Those growth projections were based upon a net density calculation, very similar to the regulations that we adopted. Remind the commission, when we do growth projections as part of a comprehensive plan adoption, we are looking at balancing our land use, our capital facilities, and frankly, our budgeting and perhaps impact fees around budgeting, altogether based on the land use expected growth. So changing a net density ordinance which might result in significantly more units, not just from the Greg Kip properties or properties he might be representing there, but from other properties within the city, we're going to start to see a change in that balance between our land use projections and our capital facilities planning. And that was the basis for the comment that additional analysis is really needed before we went with a wholesale change to the net density ordinance. Is that clear? Or clear as mud? I'm happy to speak to it further.
Evan, Mr. Kip raised the catch-22. When would this be addressed, when would, on the city's calendar, when is this going to be addressed?
And I think we've talked with Mr. Kip about a couple of different options for doing that, and certainly it could be something that maybe the Planning Commission would include in their recommendation to the city council on their forthcoming critical areas recommendations. We've also talked with Mr. Kip about proposing it as a standalone code amendment to be considered as part of this September's work plan for 2013. The council sets our work plan in September of this year. There's been, and there will be actually, an update to our comprehensive plan, I believe in 2014, if I recall correctly, and that would be probably the best time to really relook at all of these issues in a broader context. So we've identified a number of options. I suspect, I don't want to speak for Mr. Kip, this is the option at hand and perhaps preserves the most options for him moving forward to provide testimony into, so I suspect he would encourage you to take this on if possible or include it as part of your forthcoming recommendation.
Okay, great, thank you. Recommendation number one.
Recommendation number one, I'll remind the commission, this is, I've just summarized them here, and I have a little trick of being able to pop them up as needed. This is, of course, looking at whether or not to advance this first recommendation. This is from the report, where we would evaluate whether or not to change our wildlife corridors. I've used the term "base width," which might be a bit of a misnomer.
So just a couple points of clarification. The wildlife corridors are mapped currently.
Yes.
So everyone should know where they are.
Yes.
And we have one width that's standard for all corridors, is that correct?
There is, there's one, it starts at 300 feet, that's the standard width, and then we do have provisions to narrow it down to a minimum of 150 feet.
Okay, so this would introduce some variation to that, potentially.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll start with Mr. Lupinski. Do you have any questions or comments on this recommendation?
No.
Mr. Coleman.
I don't have any questions.
No, have any questions?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
All right. Mr. Islam.
My question probably with respect to identify wildlife species that are of greatest interest to the city to protect. In that very wording, greatest interest to the city to protect, that involves both scientific reviews and including public involvement. My concern, though, is that given the time where we are in July, do you think this is something doable within the timeframe, especially involving public?
When we began evaluating this proposed ordinance, initially, we were, pardon me, proposed amendment, we began by looking at what the priority species are that are identified by the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife for this area. And I'll remind you, they identify priority species across the state. Those are the species that I intended to focus on initially. If there are additional species, I would surely like to hear about them tonight that we should consider. I would start with the priority species and work from there.
So if you don't include public process, that would be the priority species included in the state process?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Wasserman? Commissioner Collins? Okay, so we have kind of this uber question, and that is, do we want to invest additional time in identifying priority species in order to consider some changes to the current wildlife corridor regulation that we have in place today? And I don't quite yet have a sense of whether or not this is something that, as a commission, we would like to pursue. So maybe we can go again down the line in the same order about whether or not Commissioner Lupinski would like to continue to consider this recommendation further, or if we should be satisfied with the regulation as it stands.
I missed this meeting. Did we see maps?
We did. At the last meeting, there were maps that were made available to us. They were on the stands in the open house.
Are they in the binder, Evan?
They're not. I can provide those maps to the Planning Commission following tonight.
And then is the object that we would consider, like a bear needs a 500-foot thing and a deer needs a 20-foot thing, we go through and parcel it? What is, what is the object here? I don't understand.
So could you, okay, so could you clarify what we might end up with potentially if we went down this path?
I think you'll, respectfully, you'll receive a series of options from the city staff. Some of them will be as you described, where you might have a baseline of 300 feet as a width. We might propose increasing that based on the type of species at hand. You know, I'm not certain, honestly, that it makes sense to stick solely with the corridors. Having just very briefly reviewed some of the priority species habitat, it's not always corollary to the corridors that we have right now. For example, if we were speaking to bald eagles as a possible priority species that we would be evaluating, bald eagles do not necessarily nest along the identified wildlife habitat corridors in Sammish. The wildlife habitat corridors in Sammish largely go along existing type F stream channels or connect high-value wetlands to said stream channels. We might be looking at an additional corridor or area located somewhere outside of those existing corridors.
So one potential outcome of pursuing this would be introducing some additional wildlife corridors into our maps that don't exist today?
Or geographic areas, perhaps. I don't know if we're necessarily talking about a linear feature either. And this is where, the intent is to provide the commission with a series of options. So I brought up bald eagles, that's, of course, an avian species. That may not be a priority species for the city of Sammish, and we may focus on bears or terrestrial animal, where then looking at corridors is more appropriate.
Does that address your question?
Certainly.
Okay, do you have a sense then on directionally whether or not you would like to continue to pursue this line of conversation?
I'm going to pass.
As in?
I don't, I'll let you guys decide. I don't have enough information.
You're going to abstain from it?
And I missed the meeting, so.
All right, great.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to study the options at hand. I think that's the whole purpose of why we're going through this, so I think we need to look at it.
You want to pursue it, all right. Commissioner Luxemburg?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Evan, we've heard tonight from the public that there is a list of species that we have on the plateau.
Yes.
Can you, just briefly, I don't know if you have this information. Can you, just briefly, I don't know if you have this information available, compare that list to the priority species list that you got from the state? Is there a pretty good match, or is it not very much of a match?
I would feel more confident in an answer if I had some time to actually prepare that for your review. I'd have to refresh my memory on both lists, honestly, to do that, do that well.
I couldn't quite hear that.
I'd like to provide that to you if this is advanced.
I just didn't hear the last one.
I don't know the contents, the species listed in both of those lists you just referred to, well enough to identify where they overlap.
I think we should continue with this, and that information would be part of the analysis.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Islam?
I think I'm looking at the science report, page nine, on the very top sentence where it talks about summary of the base width of an average 571 feet. Current city code is 300 feet, or as law, is 150 feet. So if I compare those current city code with what's recommended in the science, we are fairly below the current science required width. So from that standpoint, either we have to raise up to our number to something close to 571 feet, or we do a specific study that is a part of this recommendation, so that we understand specifically how much width we have to keep for the species that we have. So either we go with a generic 500-some numbers, or we do a specific study to come up with really a range.
Commissioner Wasserman?
I think we should go through the motions and study and see what animal are here.
Right, Commissioner Collins?
I'd like to see one of the points of the options to include in recommending backyard habitat, like the Parks and Rec Department, and what are the effects of that? A lot of the wildlife around this area has already acclimatized to living in backyards, and I don't think a bear really respects fences, and they can get, a lot of the a lot of the wildlife can go right, right past neighborhoods very easily. So I don't think we've really addressed that in what we've done so far.
So I have one question, and then I will attempt to summarize. And my question is, I'm curious to, from a permitting perspective, the degree of challenge that the current code has created for applicants to date. This, is this on our list as a known topic, or is this on our list through the BAS review, or is there some overlap of the two?
This is coming out of the BAS review more than the known topics list.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Last is first there. I'm a little hesitant to characterize the property owners' experience with this corridor. My observation would be that the current corridors we have largely do overlap other critical area features, streams in particular, or wetlands. And then we do have, as was mentioned tonight, areas where those corridors cross otherwise unconstrained property to connect those two features. I believe the corridor that used to cross 228th out here through the Skyline property and the Mary Queen of Peace Church site was alluded to. So, and that's relatively unconstrained in terms of wetlands. So both currently are a factor. I think it's more so the case that you have a stream buffer that happens to be more restrictive.
Okay, thank you. So to summarize, I will attempt, the commission would like to continue to pursue this recommendation. I think there are some very specific requests to not only look at the WDFW species list, but also the species that are specific to the plateau. Alright, with that, any other comments on that one? Okay, let's go to number two, which is related. If you'll recap that for us.
And again, this is, so the first item was primarily focusing on priority species. Does our base width, so to speak, make sense? This is looking at that 150-foot parameter that we have in our wildlife corridors, which is potentially too narrow, according to the Best of Evil Science Report from our consultant, to provide adequate wildlife habitat passage.
So, if the commission allows me to take the liberty, I would like to propose that we consider both of these recommendations in tandem. They seem to be quite related, and I would like, I would suggest that we consider both of them being influenced by the species that we want to focus on as a city. I would like to open that for, you know, other alternative suggestions, but if anybody has preference on that, maybe we can just proceed and consider both of these together. Is that alright? Seeing some nods?
They're connected, they should be looked at together, but I do agree with the recommendation that 150 feet falls fairly short of 240 minimums.
So, we want to look at both minimums and maximums relative to this topic, correct? Did I summarize that well? Alright, wonderful, thank you. So with that, we'll go on to 2-3. Are you going to talk?
Pardon me, I got carried away taking notes. So this is a relatively straightforward amendment to our current stream regulations. This speaks directly to trails and trail crossings of streams, and the recommendation from our consultant was to require the use of bridges and/or raised boardwalks when authorizing such a crossing.
And I presume this refers specifically to public trails, or no, any trail at all?
I believe it was specific to public trails. We don't typically allow private trails to cross streams that I'm aware of right now.
You know if there's a bridge?
Yeah, aren't there some driveways with bridges?
Yeah, so, keep in mind, this is a relatively narrow focus on this particular amendment. We have a separate section speaking to other types of crossings, roads, driveways. I don't, I don't see the difference, frankly, between a private trail and a public trail when we're discussing this, this type of amendment.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. We'll start with Commissioner Collins.
I agree with bringing it up.
Okay, Commissioner Wasserman?
I have a question. If this is for public trails, this becomes a tax issue for the city who wants to build this stuff whenever, correct?
Yes, we would have to pay for it.
Yes.
Okay. I think we should take a look at it, I guess. I say, I'm sorry, we're looking, advancing it to July?
So, yes, we would like to.
I think I'll advance.
Okay, Commissioner Islam?
Advance.
Commissioner Luxemburg, I'm sorry.
Like that?
Yes.
I think we should advance this one.
Wonderful. Commissioner Coleman?
Just a quick question for Evan. Would we also be looking at, or would this include looking at the standards that go along with that requirement? In other words, what materials are used for the tread of the boardwalk, etc., those kinds of things? Or is that a separate?
We could. The Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, as you may know, largely regulates material usage, especially within a stream channel. Things like pressure-treated wood, for example, are not allowed.
Copper nails.
Copper nails, yes, exactly. Unsealed, unsealed metals in general. I would observe that this is, perhaps, this particular crossing requirement, I'm losing my touch at speaking, I apologize. The requirement for bridges and raised boardwalks is effectively a requirement already from the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. This would be making an explicit requirement in our code as well. We can copy as much of the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife's requirements into our code as the planning commission deems appropriate.
Commissioner Lupinski?
Advancing it means what? That we're just, discuss it later?
That we will discuss it later, and we will look at potentially specific code changes to support this.
And we'll have more detail, so that we'll have more information to make a decision.
Okay, then I'm fine with that.
So, I do have a couple of requests relative to advancing this. One is, I would like to understand the relative benefit of having language in our code that is, where WDFW is already providing regulation? And kind of a corollary to that is, are there any streams in the city that WDFW does not regulate? You know, if there are, then that would make sense that we would have language in our code. But I'd like to understand the pros and cons around having code in our, language in our code, that, where the regulation is already provided by WDFW. I'm also having trouble speaking tonight, I apologize. The other question that I have is, are there current parks' master plans that would be affected by this change? I would very much like to have some input from the Parks and Recreation Department on what is currently planned in those master plans, and how this might affect that. I would hope that they would already be planning for this type of development, but I'd like to understand that a little bit better, before we consider this further, or as part of considering it further.
Especially like Beaver Lake, the trails there on Beaver Lake, for the, for the plan.
Okay. Alright, so this one proceeds as well. We are on to number four.
And I'll remind the commission, this is incorporating functional criteria into the city standards for reducing stream buffers, either through buffer averaging or straight buffer reduction.
Evan, could you define for us what functional criteria, what that means? Just, I think I know what it means, but I'm not 100% sure.
I mean, all we're doing is asking it to go forward so that he can do that, right?
Yeah, the functional criteria, I'll remind the commission, was actually discussed at some length in the Best of Evil Science Report, and I'll do probably a poor job of summarizing it tonight, so I would direct your attention back to that document. Essentially, as I understand it, the stream buffers, according to our Best of Evil Science Report, provide a number of functions in terms of protecting a stream, or providing a wildlife habitat, fish habitat value. Those functions include things like water quality, debris that might fall off plants, insects that might fall off plants into the stream, shading, water temperature, slow down water flow rates across the buffer into the stream, things of that nature. Currently, our code allows for stream buffer reductions, either through averaging or, or straight reduction, in particular focusing on water quality impacts through that buffer reduction. So the example, if I may, would be something like reducing a buffer on one side that might be downstream, downslope, rather, from the stream, and maybe be a field or a farm pasturage, and have relatively little value in terms of water quality to the stream itself, and increasing the buffer on the uphill side, which might be forested and have a more native or natural condition upslope, and provide additional function. That would be the type of thing we would be looking at in this, this case.
And the functional criteria would mean that instead of just looking at water quality, we'd look at several things?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll start with Commissioner Lupinski.
I like the idea of doing this, but I'm very concerned about the current language, and I would not agree to move forward with current language. To me, the idea that you need significant net improvement because there may be harm to other reduction is flipping the burden here. If you can get a buffer reduction, and you can prove it equals the harm that you're going to cause, why do you need significant? If they balance each other out, that should be sufficient, as far as I'm concerned.
Commissioner Coleman?
Just a clarification, that this is just for stream buffers, because it's not, not clear in the language that we have.
That is correct. This is in reference to streams.
Yes. Yeah, I'd like to look at it.
Okay.
I agree to advancing.
Commissioner Islam?
I agree, and I wanted to also add more criteria like cumulative effects. If we allow buffer reduction, then we need to look at the cumulative effects of allowing buffer reduction. We also need to add monitoring criteria to make sure that by reducing buffer, we are still achieving the objective at the end.
When you say monitoring?
Monitoring.
Oh, monitoring, I misunderstood, I apologize, thank you. Commissioner Wasserman?
Yeah, I think we need to look at it. I would like to take a look at what the different functions are.
Great, Commissioner Collins?
Yes, I'd also include mitigation banking and fee in lieu of
I believe we have.
For those same function categories.
Oh, so you would like to?
We're increasing, we're focusing on function, it should also be for the other categories.
So you mentioned fee and, what was the other one, Commissioner Collins?
Mitigation banking.
We do not currently have a recommendation for mitigation banking for streams.
It's coming up in a minute.
Got it, thank you. Okay, so, I have some, I have a just clarifying question as well. What we're talking about is the function of the buffer, not the function of the stream.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I definitely agree with continuing to kind of pursue this further. I would like to understand, you know, current buffer function rather than anticipated envisioned buffer function, as potentially one of the things that we consider as well, to take into effect, into account the current conditions on the site. Am I making sense? No, you're looking at me squinty-eyed.
It's often the case with me, I smile. Respectfully, Chair, I'm not sure I do understand.
So, so are we looking at the anticipated buffer function of, what I'm not clear on is, you have a stream, and it has a buffer. That buffer is, is, is perhaps established or invoked when a development action is pursued. Prior to any permissible development action, what is the, what, there is no, is there a buffer?
Yes.
There is a buffer. So that property owner is expected to maintain a buffer irrespective of whether or not there is a development activity occurring?
Maybe this would help if I describe a quick scenario for, for reference. If you imagine perhaps like a five-acre lot transected right down the middle by a, we'll use a type F stream, most people are familiar, has 150-foot buffer on, on either side. And on one side of that buffer, that lot might have been used in the past as, as horse pasturage, and so it's essentially grass with a fence, or what have you. And on the other side, maybe slightly sloped uphill, you'd have a, kind of a forested condition, where you have cedar, a mix of underbrush in that area. Currently, if a subdivision were to come in on that site, and perhaps the pasturage side of the property is more directly accessible by a road, so now I'm starting to think of a property down on the parkway, there might be a proposal from a developer to say, "Let's reduce the buffer on the pasturage side of the stream, and increase the buffer on the slightly sloped part of the hillside up above the stream." And we're going to make an argument to do that reduction, A, because it will avoid a stream crossing, which generally we discourage, and B, because actually, the wooded area uphill of the stream is functionally better buffer than the buffer area that's over the pasturage. And the city would evaluate that right now, based on water quality. What this proposed amendment would do is add into the mix other types of functions for the, for the stream buffer, pardon me.
You've answered my question, thank you for that clarification. Do we have any other questions on this? Commissioner Lupinski?
Evan, but it sounds like it's written to me that, going through the scenario you just did, they'd have to show, balancing these things out, that they significantly improved it to get this reduction, not just equalized. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. And Commissioner Lupinski, if I may remind you, we have an avoidance sequencing requirement in our critical areas code right now. And so the first order of preference on impacts to critical areas or critical area buffers, in general, is to avoid the impact altogether, if that's possible. On something like the five-acre lot that we're talking about, even though that stream runs right through the middle, we may have developable land, so to speak, on either side of the stream, some of which is close to the road I described, and some of which is, is actually fairly separated from the road because it's on the other side of the stream and the stream buffer. That would push us into a conversation with the developer in that scenario of, "Let's avoid impacts to the stream," and we have to choose between impacts to some extent. Impacts to buffer versus impacts directly to the stream when we're looking at a stream crossing to access that upper area. In that type of scenario, the city has in the past, and likely will continue to do so if we retain that particular provision, authorized reductions of the buffer in the pasturage area, in particular because it provides a net increase in the overall stream protection. So we're not only meeting that kind of parity test that you're referring to, but we're exceeding a buffer, essentially no net buffer loss, and we're doing that by airing on the side of the positive. Does that make sense, sir?
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But there's costs to all that.
Oh, yes.
Great. Any other questions on this particular item? Okay, it's a go. The next one we have is number five.
What are we doing with 2.4?
So 2.4, we are going to proceed, we're going to actually, I think, ask staff, I think, to work on some examples and some recommendations that are more specific for us to consider. That address, I have comments around whether or not we want to achieve equal protection, or whether or not we want to net improvement. That was a question that you raised. We need to take into effect, into account, or attempt to take into account, the cumulative effects of the buffer reduction that we are considering, as well as perhaps add, consider adding a monitoring requirement as part of this set of changes that we might consider. Did I catch everybody's comments there?
Good summary.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll go to number five.
Number five is essentially very similar to number four, but instead of talking about reductions, we're actually talking about increases to buffer widths. This is the one I alluded to earlier, that I'm not aware of a time in the past where the city has exercised this option under our current code. From the Best of Evil Science Report, the consultant noted that if we're adding functional criteria to buffer reductions, we should functional criteria to buffer reductions, we should also do that anytime we require an increased buffer width.
Okay. Commissioner Collins?
I agree with functional values. I support. If it doesn't have function, it doesn't have function. If it does have function, enhancement is good. I agree with functionality.
Commissioner Wasserman?
I would agree. I think we need to, I would agree with functionality also.
Commissioner Islam?
I would agree with functionality.
Great.
I think I'll agree also because of the equity. We should do whatever we are doing with the reduction, we should do the same thing with the increase.
Commissioner Luxembourg?
I agree.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lipinski?
Yes.
So we will handle those consistently. Thank you. All right, number six.
So item number six was the recommendation from our consultant regarding the allowance for the relocation of type F streams. These are the streams that are identified as the most valuable feature in the Sammamish Critical Areas Code related to streams. This relocation would only be allowed in the case of restoration. Currently, we allow relocations for type NP or NS streams, which are the non-fish-bearing perennial or seasonal streams, but we don't allow it for type F. I'll remind the commission, you did hear some specific public comment about this tonight as well, related to buffers.
All right. Commissioner Lipinski?
I just have one question. It's brought up by the culverts. Can we get some information on if we don't improve the culverts connecting Lake Sammamish, you know, going through the parkway, and we do all the stuff upstream, will it improve the salmon habitat, or do we need to address the culverts?
So kind of looking at a more holistic view of the stream end-to-end?
Yes.
Great. All right, Commissioner Coleman?
I think we should look at this.
Commissioner Luxembourg?
I'm okay with going forward on this.
Commissioner Islam?
I have a question, Evan. It wasn't quite explained in the writing, Best Available Science writing, but the way I understood, F category is for fish bearing, and yet I didn't see any discussion about how having fish complicates the issue so that restoration wasn't allowed before. And if we are to allow now, are we impacting fish in some ways?
Type F does stand for the fish-bearing types, and I will remind the commission that we specifically identify a number of streams, Pine Creek, I believe Zaccus Creek, George Davis, others, Ebride, as type F streams, whether or not there's a specific identified salmon habitat in that stream reach. As to why it wasn't identified, why it wasn't initially listed for restoration, which is, I guess, what I understand your question to be, I don't really have a good background on that. I can look into it further. This is something that came out of our 2005 update, and I need to dig into it further, really, to answer the question there.
I feel that we don't have the rationale provided here. Yes, there is a gap. We allow restoration for the other types, but we don't allow for F-type. The difference with F-type is they are by definition fish-bearing, and I'm just wondering whether there is some science missing to connect us because of the fish-bearing channels. So I'm hesitating to give you any advance until I have a better sense of what complicates F-type because of fish-bearing.
If I could suggest, Commissioner, if you decided to advance this, I'd be happy to dig into our 2005 BAS documents and provide that to you as part of your July review.
So with that hope, I will then advance.
Wonderful. Thank you. Commissioner Wasserman?
I'll advance.
Commissioner Collins?
Evan, I'd like one more step. I'd like to see the functionality. Whenever we're going to move a stream, I want to know that the functions are going to improve, okay? If the functions aren't going to improve, there's no real need to relocate anything. They're as good as they're going to get. But I think there's a lot of improvements on type F, F streams that will be facilitated, and the functions will improve if they're allowed to relocate. So yes, but functions should be the key.
So I'd like to recap. We are going to recommend that we proceed with further consideration on this recommendation with a couple of additional requests. One is to, and I think this was specific to type F, but perhaps more generally, to better understand kind of the end-to-end impacts that we will have on our stream rather than on specific development or change to that. Clarification of the rationale for why type F streams were not allowed to be relocated in our original code. And I actually have an additional request, and that is, I think, well, I apologize. Commissioner Collins also requested that we are very mindful of the function that we are either, that we are improving as part of that relocation. I think we want to be very careful about the criteria that must be met when relocating a type F stream. I think that's what I'm hearing. I think another thing that we need to be mindful of is the potential buffer changes that might be an outcome of a relocation. And so we'll have to be very careful about how we craft this particular language, so we're not, so we're creating a net improvement to the stream and to the fish, but are also mindful of the impacts to the associated property when we move it. Okay, so that's number six, I believe. Number seven?
So item 2-7 was essentially a recommendation from the consultant that we prohibit the relocation of type F streams for public infrastructure improvements. You'll see my little shorthand there of NA, meaning staff's recommending that you not advance this to your July hearing. Remind you that the basis for that recommendation is that we would like to preserve the option to balance the city's need and frankly mandate to provide public infrastructure connectivity with environmental protection. Happy to answer your questions.
Commissioner Collins?
I'm again, I'm after net increase in functions, and not advancing this, I don't want to say that functions don't count. The functions do count.
If I may, Commissioner, this relocation would be contemplated in the case of, rather than relocating with an intent to improve the functions of a type F stream or other stream, frankly, this is something where we're purely relocating to improve a road corridor, for example, where you're looking at a necessary park improvement of some type.
If the functions are degraded because we're improving a park, that's not acceptable to me, and I agree with the consultant on that. But if we're relocating a stream and improving a park, and the functions go up, then that's an entirely different matter.
And that would be the observation I would make, is that even when the city relocates a feature like this, we're held to the same standard in terms of mitigation, restoration, enhancement as the general public. I'm trying to think of a good example. If, for example, a stream had been relocated as part of the Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway improvements down at Inglewood Hill Road, we would have been held to the same standard as a developer in terms of providing a restored stream corridor or mitigating for it to address those lost functions. That's separate than the question of whether or not we relocate the stream at all.
I think we're on the same page. I'm fine with that.
So I want to make sure I understand. I'm going to attempt to recap, and you tell me if I've gotten it right. So we are, your comment on this is that you agree with the staff recommendation to not prohibit relocation, with the understanding that the requirements for relocation in this situation meet your improved function criteria?
Not mine.
Or, I'm sorry, the city's. Thank you. Okay. And Evan, your testimony to us is that the current code does require an improvement in function in the case of a stream relocation for a public project. Is that correct?
The city's current code requires that we meet the same mitigation standard as other development.
You are now answering my question.
Meaning that if you change that standard as part of your proposal in July, we would be held to that standard, whatever it might be.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Wasserman?
I'm a little concerned about the fact that if we just put in a public road, if the city decides to put a public road or develop a neighborhood, that involves moving an S-type stream to do this, you're putting implications on existing public that has property there, and you're changing a stream, and you're changing buffers, and all of a sudden, now you've got a whole nother set of people that have got issues. And I think that's something that needs to be looked at really hard before we start talking about whether or not we accept this issue.
So I want to, again, I'm going to attempt to recap.
Look at it. I want to see it. Yes.
You would like to consider prohibiting the city from moving an F-type stream?
I'm, I don't know if I want to say I want to prohibit.
That's what we're talking about, just to be clear.
Well, I don't want to prohibit it if they can show, wait, 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 if they can show me that they are not impacting people. There has to be something that says, we're not going to impact anybody if the city says, yes, they're going to move it.
Okay. So I think this is consistent with Commissioner Collins, and that is, we want to look at the standards for stream relocation, whether it's public or private, whether it's for restoration or for a road, and make sure that we're satisfied with the functions and benefits of that relocation in either scenario. Did I recap both of the testimony that, or the comments that I've received from the two of you sufficiently?
For right now, yeah.
For right, okay, thank you. Commissioner Islam?
I am okay with the staff comment, as long as the balance between various public interests are documented, given to the public for public comment. So as long as we have those, it's not that we have to presume city always does that. We have to have documentation that shows that city has looked at the balance and spoke for the greater public benefit versus impact.
Commissioner Luxembourg?
I'm okay with the recommendation as it is.
Okay. Commissioner Coleman?
I'm okay with staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Lipinski?
I disagree with staff's recommendation.
You think, okay.
I think we should get more information on it. That's what, isn't that the point of moving forward?
Yes, it is.
I think we need more information.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that we would like to, I don't, I don't believe that we are comfortable prohibiting outright yet, that we do want to have some additional information. So although we're not saying no, we're not saying yes at this point. So I think it would be very helpful as we go into this relocation of F-type stream subject, that we have a lot, some information about what the current code allows, so that we can consider whether or not we want to make any changes.
Commissioner Chair, if I may, can I suggest this as an approach? What we could do is, we are intending to draft language for you well before your July public hearing. As part of that, you will see some follow-up documentation in your resource guide. If I could suggest, perhaps our first step would be to draft the relocation language for the type F streams that you asked us to advance in the previous item, and include some additional written information for the planning commission's review, show you those specific standards we're talking about, and then look to the planning commission to explicitly direct us to draft language along the lines that we're talking about in seven.
For public projects.
For the public projects, if that's the commission's will at that time, after reviewing it a little bit further.
I'm comfortable with that. I think I'm seeing some head nods. That sounds very good. Thank you. Number eight.
Number eight. So the Best Available Science Report by the city's consultant recommended that if the city adopted a fee-in lieu mitigation program for wetlands, that we also look at a fee-in lieu mitigation program for streams. I can go back into the description I provided earlier about mitigation preferences and the like, if that's useful to the conversation now.
So the question is, do we want to consider a fee-in lieu program for streams? And we'll start with Commissioner Collins.
Each project that would come under this would have to be evaluated, and you'd have to, I mean, it'd be a significant fee-in lieu if you actually moved a stream. I mean, it'd be huge. I mean, cost-wise, it'd probably be prohibitive to even do it, but not to have the option, I don't agree with. I like to have the option, and if you take in all the functionality of what moving a stream comes up with, it's a very high threshold.
Can I ask a clarifying question briefly? We do allow an in lieu, we allow, what do we allow in the city today?
So currently, we have, we have two options, and then essentially a negotiated discussion. So the first option, the preferred option, is restoring onsite in kind. The second option would be doing restoration mitigation, frankly, off-site, but in the same drainage sub-basin, so the Thompson sub-basin, for example. After that, if we need to do restoration mitigation outside of the sub-basin, we're talking about a reasonable use exception or something of that nature. We don't have a specific administrative allowance for a fee-in lieu mitigation program. If you added this option into our code, that would be a third choice before we got to the reasonable use exception stage.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. So Commissioner Collins, I
I disagree. I like
You would like to retain this option. Great, thank you. Commissioner Wasserman?
I'm curious, Evan. If we have a fee-in lieu of mitigation program, would you counteract that by tax credit program for those who do, or for those who go as far as to make changes to improve the quality of the setback and something of that nature?
That's not an item that we'd considered. Certainly could be added to the table. Tax crediting itself would be frankly challenging.
Well, it seems like there's a way to get something back. If I'm going to give up property and I'm going to do some work, shouldn't I get something in return for it, other than just having a nice piece of dirt between me and something?
That would be my question. I'm
The answer to my question of not advancing, my answer is, provide a fee-in lieu mitigation if we have alternatives, if you go the other way. Okay? I would agree with yes, to have it, but I think there needs to be some opposite direction for people who do.
Commissioner Wasserman, are you bringing up the idea that, you know, if the regulations decrease the use of your land, the city should give you tax credits?
Yes.
Then I think that's a new item, and I like that idea, but I don't think, isn't that a new, if I understand, we have to add
Well, if I'm tying that to a fee-in, a fee-in lieu of mitigation, I think that kind of goes along the same boundaries. I think it's in the same realm.
Can I ask a question along those lines?
I'm losing control. Go ahead.
Doesn't the county already offer a program like this, Evan, where a property owner can record a conservation easement along that area and effectively get a reduced property value?
Yes.
Thereby, you know, a tax credit from the city?
It's analogous to a tax credit through the city. You're referring to the public benefit rating system. King County offers that option. That's actually a state mandated program that all the counties offer at one level or another. And pardon me for a moment ago, you threw me off a little bit with a taxing comment, which is not something typically that we handle directly at the city. If I may, I'll make the observation, we do have the, some options for tax reductions in the area encumbered. It's not a credit per se, it's a reduction, and there is a distinction there. I'll remind the commission, this is an existing buffer that is being reduced. So arguably, the financial impact is present today. I don't know if that affects your thoughts or not.
Well, it's, I think this goes back to if you move a stream, the impacts caused by it, and what happens to the properties around it.
But this just allows an option.
Correct.
Okay. So Commissioner Wasserman, you would like to continue
Yes.
The possibility of allowing a fee-in lieu option?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Islam?
I agree with the city staff to recommend not advancing primarily because city is not giving any assurance that they know how it works, and whether it's going to result in the benefit that we are asking for. So without city giving me the assurance that this is a program that will work, they know how to make it work, I cannot ask for advancing this.
Thank you. Commissioner Luxembourg?
On this one, I agree with Commissioner Islam. If we don't know how to do it from an administrative standpoint, I don't know how to move forward with it.
Commissioner Coleman?
I'm going to agree with Commissioner Collins. I think he put it very eloquently, that not having the option, I think, would be unfortunate, and it may be fiscally infeasible to do it. And I understand there, there may be some difficulty in working up the program itself in terms of writing the regulation, but I think it's worth taking a look at. I think it's worth looking at a fee-in lieu program.
Commissioner Lipinski?
I agree that we should look at it. And as part of that, I think staff should get back to us how the program would work. I mean, that's
So my, my take on this is I'm not convinced that fee-in lieu will provide the type of function that we want to retain in the city. That being said, I also very much respect the desire to have as many options available to our citizens as possible. So I think that we, the direction that we're giving you is we would like to pursue this. We would like to understand the administrative aspects of to understand the administrative aspects of implementing this. I think we will also have a similar question relative to wetland fee-in-lu at some point. And Commissioner Islam, I completely, would you please restate your point on this?
Until I have assurance from the city staff that they administratively understand how to administer the program, I'm not-
Okay. So, I just wanted to make sure I covered that. So, I think there's actually two key issues that we'd like to explore further. One is the administrative aspect. The other is the confidence around, are we retaining or improving the function of the stream with, with an in-lu program? I'd like some more information about that. Commissioner Collins?
And I would like some input, whether we contain that to projects inside of Samamish, or export them to King County. Commissioner Mabubu, I support. I would, the benefit should be close to home.
What now, I, I, property rights, people, you're talking about the benefit to the city of Samamish, but there are benefits to the property owners to be able to pay to improve somewhere else. And I certainly don't want that dismissed with moving forward. I wanna hear that.
I, I agree. But, but if there's a, if there's a close-by project, I think that should have the priority.
Hey, if we can take that culvert out, so the salmon can get a little further upstream, that's great. But, but I think we want some assurance with this type of program, that that's actually going to be a likely outcome, that we'll improve one of our own culverts, rather than somebody else's.
That's not my point. My point is, that would be nice, but if that is not an option, the property owner should have the right to improve it somewhere else. It doesn't have to just be a benefi, benefiting something in Bellevue will still benefit Lake Samamish.
That's a very fair point. Thank you for clarifying.
So, and it benefits the property owner. I don't mind creating priorities. Say, you'd rather improve the culvert in Samamish, but if you can improve a culvert in Bellevue, and let the property owner have some, you know, freedom to use his land, that, to me, should not be off the table.
I think that's clear.
So, I think we need two optional versions of this, one for a fee-in-lu program within Samamish, and one within the watershed, Rye Eight.
Or perhaps some priorities around that.
But I think some of us are saying, we still have the preference to see Samamish doesn't, environment or-
First priority.
Infrastructure in Samamish does not become degraded at the expense of improving somewhere else.
So, that would imply the prioritization. Perfect. These are sticky stuff. Okay. I think we're on number nine.
Number, number nine was typo streams. I'm batting about 500 right now. I wonder where we're gonna end. Typo streams, this was alluded to in the consultant's best available science report. And as best the city staff can determine, after discussing this with the consultant, they identified it as an option the city could investigate further. Typo streams, I remind you, are streams that effectively flow nowhere. They don't appear to really go any specific direction, and particularly don't get, tie into Samanid streams. I see maybe a frown up there. Typo streams, the best analogous case-
It's okay. You don't have to spend any more time on typo. I, I think we can start with Commissioner Lapinski on this.
Again, I missed this presentation. What's the, I have a question. What would be the point of saying we have a typo stream?
The recommendation from the consultant was that if we did have typo streams, we identify a 25-foot buffer from that stream. And so, the benefit would be identifying an additional feature that may exist within the city of Samamish. Frankly, we don't believe it does, but it may, and regulating it accordingly.
But you mentioned there's property in the Trossics that hasn't been developed.
Yes, sir.
Can we say for sure there's no typo stream there?
I believe we reasonably can, and bear with me while I explain. Pretty much all of the water in Samamish drains off the plateau, one direction or another, into Patterson Creek, by Bear Creek, or into Lake Samamish. I'm paraphrasing, please don't correct me if I've missed one there. Point being, all of those features flow into Lake Samamish, a Samanid-bearing water body, and then from there into the Samamish River, and into Lake Washington and beyond. Type O streams literally do not connect, as I understand it, into a Samanid-bearing feature downstream. They flow back into the ground.
So, the recommendation from staff is that we not add an additional stream type of type O, and the question is, are, do, so the question to you is, do you support that recommendation or not?
Based on what Evan said, yes.
Great. Commissioner Coleman?
I agree with staff.
Commissioner Luxembourg?
I agree.
Commissioner Islam?
Yes.
Agreed.
I disagree. I think there may be some typo streams. We don't know yet. And precluding a definition in the code will mean that you can never have a typo, if it is found. I disagree with this. For an example, a stream could go directly into a critical recharge aquifer area, and wind up going into pipes. I disagree.
Commissioner Collins, I have a question for you. I believe that there is a relatively large group of us that would agree with staff's recommendation. Are you comfortable with that, or would you, I am, I am happy to support pursuing this further on your request.
I would like you to consider my objection.
We have any further conversation?
You do not come to a number of four, then it will not go forward.
So, I would like to actually request that staff prepare a definition for typo streams that we can consider or not when we do our deliberation. I think it's a relatively straightforward request.
If we don't come up with four votes here, I don't see putting them through the world.
So, we're not, I wanna be clear, we're not voting, and that's why I wanted to ask-
If we're not putting, if there's not four votes to put this concept forward, it should die.
I, I, so I, that was my question to you, is, are you comfortable with us closing this issue tonight?
I, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But I would like you to consider my comment before you-
Okay. So, now that Commissioner Collins has made his statement, would anyone like to change their recommendation?
I just have a further question. Let's say you discovered a typo stream on a new development. How would it be regulated? Would it just be ignored now, or would it be regulated on something else?
Would not be regulated.
Actually, it would likely be regulated as a type NS or NP stream.
And a type NS stream has what kind of buffer?
A type NS stream, I believe, has a 50-foot buffer. A type NP stream has a 75-foot buffer.
Then I would go with Commissioner Collins. If this is an unknown, there's little work, I would hate to see something that the best available science says should be 25-foot, and someone gets stuck with trying to develop this property, and it's all discovered, do they have to have a 50- or 75-foot buffer?
Okay. Commissioner Coleman, do you have any comment?
I'll side with Commissioner Collins on this one.
Ooh, look at that. All right. Commissioner Luxembourg?
No comment.
Commissioner Islam?
No comment.
Commissioner Wasserman?
I'm swayed.
Okay, we have enough sway. There we go. I think that worked out actually relatively well, so thank you very much for following that process. I think that's something that we may employ at some point in the future. Okay, so, we're on to number 10.
Number 10, I'll remind you, was the first of the specific recommendations we received from the public, and this is to provide the option to delineate stream buffers, in particular as they relate to human improved areas.
And we did have some discussion today and clarification about what buffer delineation might mean. Do we need to clarify that before we have any comment? Is everyone comfortable with our understanding of what buffer delineation might entail? Okay, we're good. We'll start with, oh heck, Commissioner Collins?
I'm sorry.
You're sorry?
Yes, I support.
Okay. Commissioner Wasserman?
I'll support it.
Commissioner Islam?
I'm not seeing staff comment on that, 210.
So, staff comment on 210 is included in 211?
Oh, okay.
And they are actually recommending advancing?
I don't have as much information as I had for all the previous ones, primarily because there is no best available science for these comments, and these are coming from the public. So, I'm not comfortable at this point, until I see the rationale behind those. I have read public comments a couple of times relating to those. I have questions relating to those. So, until there is equitable amount of information, as we had for the BAS, I'm not comfortable advancing those.
So, your request is, before consideration, we would have additional information. Evan?
Yeah, and I do think that the staff intends to provide that additional BAS analysis, if this is advanced forward.
Great, thank you. Is that sufficient?
I feel a little bit inequity in the sense that we are advancing something without having much information, but then again, if we don't advance, we don't have information. And we just can't use the same principle to strike down some and strike up some. So, I just frankly feel I don't have information. But what I do have information about is buffer width, a whole slew of signs provided in that. I have not seen anywhere how delineation really benefits the buffer width. I feel like it's taking the other way around. We are looking at what's around the critical area, and then we are determining at what level we need to manage that critical area. To me, it should be what the critical area is about, and then figure out what we should be able to regulate. So, I feel it's going against the way we should be looking at. For those reasons, I am also not convinced that this is something I want to advance.
Commissioner Luxembourg?
I'm, I'm okay with further considering this, because then it'll give us the data we need.
Commissioner Coleman?
I'm okay looking at this. I would like to make a comment, though. I, I'm uncomfortable using a delineated stream buffer program citywide. I don't, it doesn't afford the amount of predictability that I think property owners need, when they're trying to find their way through city code. What I do support, though, I think, is doing something like that, some, maybe not specifically that program, but something like that for property owners that developed before there was a critical areas ordinance, or, you know, trying to find some relief for current property owners that just want to use their property, but have a, a regulation that wasn't developed until after they occupied. And I, I think that's kind of, to me, I feel that's how we should focus this.
Commissioner Lapinski?
Again, I don't think we have a lot of information, but I wanna move it forward. And I'd like to suggest that the public who brought this up be very much a give-and-take in that process. I mean, they should be able to raise their hand and say, you know, what we're hearing is wrong or right, 'cause they're the ones who seem to push this and brought it forward. And I would really encourage their active participation when we hear about this.
Kathy, I'm-
Commissioner Collins?
Thank you. The other thing I'd like to see from the public is, as this goes forward, if, it appears that there's enough votes to do it, I'd like to see suggestions on how function can be improved in these areas, and still have the, have the homeowners feel like they're, they're getting their fair shake, too. An example that I really hope they talk about is that there's reclaimed streams that are now daylighted, but, but they have bark, and the functionality of that land is, is almost zero. How, how can it be improved so that there's functionality for that stream? I'd really like to see that addressed by the public, both sides.
Commissioner Islam, did you wanna say something? I'm sorry, I was-
Yes. I have another question for you, Evan. Looking at the current code, there is sort of a grandfathering provision. So, this goes to developed versus undeveloped part of the discussion. If we are already grandfathering certain developed areas based on the date of construction, I think, I believe, June 27, 1990, or something of that fashion, then we are already assuming that critical areas in those properties cannot be improved because of the existing barriers. Then, the burden becomes even higher for the other undeveloped areas currently, but will be developed in future, to mitigate so that at the end, net benefit is at least positive or zero. So, from that standpoint, I see an issue of equity. If we, if we don't allow already developed areas to do something, then we would be asking newer developed areas to do more than their share.
I don't think that's an assumption that you can make. I think there is, are ways to improve the functionality of those sites.
So, I, I wanna recast this and say that I think what, if I can try to recap, what Commissioner Islam is concerned with, is that in progressing, and I think this is related to both number 10 and 11, that in progressing these forward for further consideration, that the, the issue of equity between developed and undeveloped be considered. I also understand, you know, obviously, the issue of opportunity between developed and undeveloped. So, we're going to have to be challenged with tackling, tackling, finding a balance in that. Is there any further comment on this, Commissioner Luxembourg?
I think that finding the balance is the key, 'cause there's a lot of conflicting things that we need to consider.
I agree. Anyone else have any comment on this? So, I'll try to recap. And, and may I ask briefly, would, would everyone's comments also apply to 11, or do we want to talk about that one as well separately?
I assumed it was kind of like a double or nothing.
Everyone is considering them together. Okay, so we are going to progress number 10 and number 11. I think specifically, we need to understand the scientific basis that might support buffer delineation, if there is any. I'm pro, you know, pro or con, or any evidence of, of where that has worked and proven to work in the past, or be valid. We have the issue of equity that we need to address. I think we also have some desire to achieve an improvement in function with any regulation that we might consider in this area, as well as kind of the, the developed versus undeveloped, what's fair, on both sides.
And again, I would like the process to be a little more give-and-take with the public.
Thank you. Okay. So, thank you for repeating that. There's, I think this is something that I will volunteer the chair and vice chair to take up with staff a little bit further about, you know, we have an opportunity to have access to staff and consultants. We'll need to try to find a similar way to have access to other sources of recommendations as we go through this process. We're open to suggestions, if anyone wants to make some. So, that was 10 and 11, and we have number 12. And, and I suspect number 12 is somewhat related to our typo conversation. This is around stream definition. So, would you please briefly recap for us, Evan, the recommendation, and then kind of the staff action that would be required to, you know, in proceed, progressing this forward?
Yeah. So, the, the comment was initially brought up in the context of how the city defines streams in the city municipal code, and whether or not that was consistent with state law. Since then, the city staff has spoken with the person who generated the comment, who also spoke tonight, Mr. Brockway. And we've received the impression that the concern is really over how the city defines stream channels, and whether everything that is currently defined as a stream is appropriately defined as such. Maybe it should be something else, a water course, a ditch, what have you. So, this is some, this is an item, if you choose to advance. I think we have kind of a, a number of duties as staff that we'll need to look into. One is certainly speaking with the commenter further, to make sure that we clearly understand the comments. I did hear his comments tonight about how we, we maybe have summarized and lost something in the summarization exercise. And then, I'll remind the commission, we do have some duties around best available science, the policy basis for any recommendation, looking at applicability, ease of use, the like.
Commissioner Collins?
Approve.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Approve.
Commissioner Islam?
Approve.
Commissioner Luxembourg?
Approve.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapinski?
Yes.
So, this one proceeds as well. Now, I'd like to, and I'll start on my right with Commissioner Lapinski. I'd like to ask the commission if they have any other recommendations that, that we believe have not been presented for consideration, that we would like to discuss. Commissioner Lapinski?
Yeah, I would like to at least move forward Mr. Kip's suggestion, and, you know, I wanna hear from staff in a more detailed way, why this is not the right time to address it, or why this is the right time to address it.
Okay. Commissioner Coleman?
I would agree with that. I would just, to be clear, it's, it's the issue of how density is calculated on property.
Do you have anything else that you would like us to consider?
Nope.
We'll, we'll talk about the density one in a minute. I just wanna get everything on the table. Sorry. Okay.
I have nothing to add.
Commissioner Islam?
I may have in future, so, but I will be timely for topics. So, at this point, I don't.
The, the, we are not closed for recommendations from the commission or the public at, at this point. All right. Commissioner Wasserman?
Nothing else.
Commissioner Collins?
Yeah. I've, I've got some concerns, but my overarching one is that we don't really talk about a full water cycle here. The planning commission is looking at things as piecemeal, and, and I'd like to propose that the planning commission have a, more of a roundtable discussion about how the water cycle really should be managed. And an example of that would be, right now, we dump a lot of water into our creeks, and we say that we're gonna reduce phosphorus by 80 cent by this much larger quantity of stream water. I think we should limit things going into creeks and streams, and then eliminate 80% of the phosphorus from that, from what, what's, what the remainder is. I think sequencing, mitigation sequencing is extremely arbitrary. The goal should be not- The goal should be not do nothing, but improve things. And that's, you can't get there if you avoid things. There should be a process where the function is the higher good and saying, "Do nothing wrong" is not good enough. I want to get better. And another example is mixing of wetlands and surface water runoff. How should that be accomplished and what good things can it accomplish? Town center was an example. I think the planning commission should take a look at how you mix surface water runoff and wetlands and streams. We're not there yet. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to try to recap. First of all, this question of density, I know that there have been a number of discussions about this. What I would propose we consider, and we can talk about this as part of our next agenda item, is perhaps raising this as an issue during our joint meeting that has come up and allowing the council to provide some guidance at that meeting. Would that be a reasonable next step?
I disagree with that. I think we're an independent body. A citizen has raised an issue, and all I'm asking for is to advance it so we can get some information. And once we have the information, we can go to the city council.
So what...
We don't have to do everything the city council. We have to do what they tell us, but we are an independent body who can do other things.
Okay, so you would, so please recap for me what action you would like the commission or staff to take on this item.
I would like just to advance it, not decide it, but I want more information of why this is something that can or cannot be done in a simple process.
Okay, so we would like, so Commissioner Lipinski is asking for some further information around this particular item and whether or not it's appropriate for us to consider as part of this code update.
Can I summarize?
Okay, great, thank you. And does anybody have any disagreement with that at this point?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
I think what I'm understanding is we have some items where we were, they're in a sort of a formal consideration process, but Commissioner Lipinski has asked us to create a sort of a new category of things that we might want to consider more, but we don't have enough information yet. Am I understanding that correctly?
I don't, I don't know if you summarized, Kathy summarized what I wanted. I want more information to decide if this is something she would address. It doesn't seem to be any different than what we're doing whole night. We're like just advancing things for further discussion.
Okay. Commissioner Islam, did you want to comment?
My concern is with the relevance. As part of the BAS for the critical areas, I don't see density is becoming part of that. I see this is a great question. We or city administration or city council, someone needs to take it on, but I don't see this as part of the current agenda that we are working in.
So I want to be mindful of the fact that this is not explicitly in our scope. I think what I've summarized will help us get some clarity around that. So I have no issue with staff providing us with some additional information. We have not, at this point, made any decision about whether or not we would actually make a formal code change related to this, but we are asking for some more information.
And just to be clear on my task, Chair, I understand that I'm to provide you with additional written documentation, similar to what we're doing for stream relocations, related to why we're recommending to not advance this item.
Correct.
And if I hear from the commission further, we would take action at that point.
Correct. Thank you for summarizing. Right, there were a couple of other things that were mentioned around mitigation banking and mitigation sequencing, and I want to understand, you know, that isn't specifically related to the topic of streams that we have with us tonight, and I'm wondering if staff could give us some guidance on when we might be covering that area in our program.
Mitigation banking, the context I'm familiar with that particular term is purely related to wetlands. So I would suggest that's something we should take up on May 17.
Okay.
The avoidance sequencing item, I want to make sure I capture this correctly, Commissioner Collins, was related to the first order of preference being to improve the critical area feature or buffer, and then we should talk about avoiding or mitigation or what have you after that.
Right, but the thing is, is that so many projects die right at avoid, if there's any way to avoid. But if we can create a better situation, we should skip down to another level.
So you're suggesting that we might want to consider changing the sequencing to be improve first and avoid second?
Right, so if you can check off improve, you can go to item three or item four.
So I definitely think that this is a pretty significant topic, and I want to make sure that...
Yes, it is.
So we've alluded to over the time of these administrative items that were going to be bringing before you. This will be another one we're happy to add to the list.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And then there's, I'm going to recast something that you said, and you tell me if I've missed the mark on this, but Commissioner Collins brought up, you know, kind of the water life cycle and, you know, how surface water and wetlands and streams are all interrelated. And I think this gets to the holistic aspect of the water life cycle and the fact that we're kind of addressing these topics in a piecemeal manner. So what I would like to propose is that we have some conversation between the leadership and staff about, at what point do we kind of step back? And I think it will be after we've gone through each of the piece parts and look at the whole and make sure that in all of the adjustments to the piece parts, we don't have, you know, a body that has an arm attached to the head instead of to the shoulder kind of thing. So, you know, we can take that up, I think, with staff and talk about how we might orchestrate that conversation, but I do think that's a very important thing to be mindful of is we want to be mindful of the whole as well as the part. Does that address your comment?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. At this point, I believe we've concluded our review of the recommendations. I want to ask, Evan, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask that are clarifying before we attempt to capture minutes and proceed with next steps?
I don't believe so, Chair.
Wonderful. So we have about 18 minutes left before we adjourn on time, which will be our goal. The last topic that we will be covering is, I want to review with everybody our plan for the joint meeting. Want to make sure that as commissioners, we, you know, have a shared goal about what we're going to cover and that we're all aligned going into that meeting. And if there's additional materials we need to provide or questions you may have, that we all kind of walk into that meeting prepared. And so with that, I believe our esteemed director has returned to walk us through some proposed agenda items for that meeting. And I will, are we going to be talking about the level of service topic tonight, Cameron?
Yeah, that's slide number two, actually.
Okay, great, thank you. Then I'll hand it over to you.
Very much. And thanks to the commission and the members of the public and the staff. Been observing the process and taking care of some unfinished business back in my office tonight. I've really been impressed with the process that you've been running, so thank you for your work. Debbie, could you put the screen on for them again? A couple of days ago, staff sent out to the commission, and I sent to my boss the proposed agenda for the May 8th joint meeting. Leadership has seen this before. The main point of that meeting, the motivation, was for the commission to kind of report to the council on how you're doing on this ECA process. So we've listed a few bullet points that would essentially kind of characterize the progress to date, talking about scope and schedule, overview of your process. Commander Vice Chair, he's been helping us create a flow chart that was attached to that email that sort of tried to graphically illustrate the steps and how they logically flow one to the other. It does look a little bit like a plumbing diagram that I saw from my condo the other day, but as long as the water flows in one end and flows out the other, we're good. Maybe a brief recap on meetings held so far, some examples of some of the policy or technical issues that you've already identified. And then also importantly, talking about documentation. How are you going to present that material and can you, is the format that you're going to use going to be workable, acceptable, and helpful to the council? Because obviously, we want them to have a sense of confidence in your recommendations, clearly understand the recommendations, including the rationale behind them. Let me stop for a second and offer, Mike and Kathy, if you wanted to offer any comments to correct or elaborate on my comments.
In the interest of time, I will say you've covered this sufficiently.
Okay, great. So that's the basic purpose.
I had one thing, though.
Oh, yeah.
Can't say.
I knew you'd do it.
In addition to our presenting where we are, which you've explained very well, we want to get some feedback from them.
Absolutely.
Because it's a cycle, and we think that in the past, maybe we haven't understood their expectations quite as well as we could have.
You made my next point, so I think that's exactly right. And hopefully, this is one of several mechanisms the commission will be using to stay in touch and keep those expectations as clear as possible. We want to try to avoid that problem that has come up in the city in years past of, what did you do? You went off in another direction or you didn't do it right or something. So we're trying to be very transparent, both at a staff level, but I think the commission's trying to be transparent with the council on what it's doing as well. So that's the big thing. I do see this as a bit of an interactive dialogue where probably the mayor, deputy mayor will lead the discussion. They'll probably ask the chair and vice chair to present much of this material. I'll serve as a backup facilitator or filler in of gaps as needed, but the really important thing is for the two bodies, the elected and appointed officials, to interact. So in terms of products coming out of that meeting, we ought to see some consensus, head nods, or specific changes, for example, to a decision table or changes to the process that the council would say, "Would you please do this?" And then our job, again, is to document that. Hopefully, the "this" that they ask is doable within the scope and reasonable, and so there's an opportunity for discussion. We'll take that guidance back, adjust our own work accordingly, and then keep on going. I would observe that, again, this is one technique to stay in touch. There are monthly leadership meetings where Mike and Kathy are meeting with Mayor Odell and Deputy Mayor James. Kathy and Mike have taken additional of their personal time to try to sit down with individual council members or in small groups, the ones that are not in leadership, to also stay in touch via that mechanism. So we're really trying hard to make sure that we understand and work with the council effectively. Another joint meeting will likely be scheduled for the September-ish timeframe, depending on exactly when you finish, when that handoff might be scheduled, and we'll see how that works. So any other comments or questions?
At the council meeting, how much time at the council meeting is directed towards PC?
On this joint meeting, I expect us to take about an hour on this subject. So that starts at 6:30 on May 8th. First hour will be on ECA. Obviously, there's a little bit of wiggle room if need be. They have three major subjects that evening. The next one is the one I'd get to on the second slide, if I can go ahead, which is this whole issue of transportation level of service or LOS. This is another example of an issue that we knew was coming. Staff kind of expected this not to come quite this early, so we're doing our best to handle this. And there's essentially a request for the commission to try to find a way to fit this topic into your work for 2012. There's a council interest and council directive, as I understand it, to the city manager to make progress on this issue within this calendar year. Now, because this level of service is an element of our comprehensive plan, it falls within your purview, and you need to have an oar in the water and help this decision get made. The challenge, of course, is that you have a big work product right in front of you now with ECA, so how do we do that? Right now, what you see up there is kind of a working outline of a schedule, obviously no specific dates yet, and we will at least know that next Tuesday, May 8th, there is an opportunity, and we hope you'll be able to take advantage of this opportunity, to listen to an overview of the city's current LOS system from our transportation consultant. And then hear any counsel comments and directions on this topic, what are they trying to accomplish this year? My colleague, Laura Philpott, our Public Works Director, who is taking the lead on this work, we are talking back and forth about, well, how do we do this? When can we do it? You'll see the third bullet is one of the mechanisms that we have discussed, which is to hold a joint public hearing. The council and the commission sitting together for a single public hearing as opposed to two public hearings. That's unusual, but that's a mechanism that is afforded for under state law and our process here. Still would mean that the commission would likely meet after that joint public hearing to deliberate on your own and form your recommendation, and then the council would take the product over the finish line before the end of the year. So that's kind of the working outline right now. I won't, for time reasons, I won't go into the details of what level of service is, but it does relate to the city's transportation system and specifically the capital projects, the road and street improvement projects that are necessitated to meet that level of service. So setting that level of service is a policy decision the city makes. It influences the spending of capital dollars. It influences the spending of impact fee dollars, and it has an influence on what those impact fee amounts are. So there is a system that is interrelated and interlocked, and we're going to play with one of the rheostats here, apparently. And so it has some implications that you will need to understand, hence the request for you to stick around for the 7:30 to 8:30 period on the 8th to get an overview from the consultant. I think we may do that a second time or may have a general overview on the 8th and then come back with something more specific, perhaps in July if we can do it, or September. I show that in that hashed thing because July is what my boss would like to see. September is what I think might be more realistic. So I think we'll straddle that line until we know a little bit more about your ECA process and how that's going. That's my overview for this topic. Any questions?
Can you flip back to the prior slide for us?
Sure.
Thanks. So first of all, I just want to make sure that, you know, you all are comfortable with the agenda that we've proposed, that you think it's the right set of topics to cover with council to make sure that we're aligned going forward and that there are no surprises. Commissioner Collins?
May I suggest that the planning commission email the chair with any suggestions that they would like to have included? There's not enough time at that meeting to bring it up individually.
Suggestion, I'm sorry.
Well...
Yes, you can email the chair with any ideas and suggestions. That would be lovely.
If we try to speak individually at this meeting, it's going to...
Oh, you mean at the meeting itself?
At the meeting itself.
Okay, so yeah...
Email ahead of time to the chair so it can be included in the comments.
Yeah, if there is anything that you would like us to kind of reinforce or be sure to have covered, please definitely let us know in advance. You know, I think to Cameron's point, we will, to some degree, be looking to the mayor and deputy mayor to kind of lead the conversation, but we did propose this as, you know, these are definitely things that we want to cover with the council in some of the meetings that we've had, you know, kind of preliminarily leading up to this. I think that they, there isn't necessarily a shared understanding of the process that we've been going through, the amount of public input that we've received, and kind of the direction that we are progressing down. And so this is, you know, an opportunity to kind of level set and make sure that there's something that we should be doing that we're not, that we understand what that is now and can kind of course correct, rather than find out after the fact that, you know, there was a particular council person that expected us to engage with the public or cover a specific topic that we missed simply out of unawareness. So we're attempting to avoid that if we can. Any other questions or comments on this? Great. So the request is that we arrive on or before 6:30 and plan to stay until about 8:30. What opportunity for public comment will be available on that evening?
You know, the council's always been very liberal about that. I'd say it's probably less so in joint meetings like this, but I'll have to take a look. I'm not even sure the agenda is set for that night and whether there's a, they might start with a public comment. That's often, as you do, they start with a limited opportunity. That's often, as you do, they start with a limited opportunity there. So depending on how many people show up, of course, we don't know exactly whether we'll stick to 6:30 to 8:30.
Going to be a very exciting meeting.
Or later. So just for the record, there is a third subject that you're not being asked to, you're certainly welcome and encourage the residents to stay, related to the metro bus changes that are underway at the county level, so.
All right, thank you.
I suggest we encourage the public, though, if they do want a public comment.
Absolutely.
Send it an email to Debbie, and she'll include it in our stuff, so hopefully, we can speed that meeting along. That's two and a half hours to get through.
So to clarify, actually, so would we want public comment for that meeting to go to Debbie, or would we want it to go to the city clerk?
The city clerk is better in that case, because this is a city council meeting that we're kind of jumping into, so she's got to keep the record, and the clerk's got to keep that record in that particular case. So thanks for the... I want to also note for the record again, too, since thousands are watching us on television, ECA@ci.samamish.wa.us.
Thank you.
That is the best email address, and it goes into several boxes, and it automatically gets part of our public records.
Thank you for clarifying that for everyone. We want to avoid any missteps in information sharing going forward, and I think that's a great way to do that. At this point, does anyone have anything else that they would like to say before we adjourn the meeting?
I have one question for Cameron. I noticed some planning commissioners now have a city email. Is it, are we all going to get it, or was that just a mistake?
I'm not aware that planning commissioners have city email.
There is one planning commissioner with a city email.
Oh, lucky person.
So, and they don't even know it, but it's on the list, so I'm wondering, is this going to, is it something that's being worked on, or was it just a mistake on the website?
Well, if it's a mistake, it's in the right direction. We've been asking for that for a while. I want that to happen. I'll ask Debbie to check in with the IT folks tomorrow. I hadn't noticed that myself, so...
I suspect the...
Noticed today when I was trying to email you.
Okay.
I suspect the planning commissioner that you're referring to may not be aware that they have this email.
Oh, they're aware.
Okay, so I would definitely not encourage anyone to start using that just yet, but I do very much support the idea that we would obtain city emails at some point. That is, to Cameron's point, something that we've been requesting for a while, sensing that not everyone wants one, but that has been requested. Any other comments for the good of the order?
Mike's got one. @Mike.
Oh, a comment. I thought he had an email. Okay, yes, Commissioner Collins?
Before we adjourn, I just wanted to say congratulations to Northeast Samamish Surin Water. They were voted the best water in King County. Excellent honor.
All right, and on that note, we will officially adjourn the meeting at 8:59. Thank you.
Great, thank you.